Thanks for having me. Dave, you know, another day that we have on our health. So we're all able to be here. We're not an opportunity to come together and try to do your will or ultimately what's right by the residents of this town. I'm afraid that you make this meeting productive more if you give this wisdom to be able to guide this town, these people as they make their voice heard and will make these decisions. Uh, you can thanks. All right. And then our probably important, we'll then do the uh, the agents.
We are in the United States of America, to the Republic of the States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so what I'm gonna do, I won't call myself. Our uh, clerk is uh, I think, Mayor, I'm here. Councilman Harry?
Here.
Council uh, Mayor?
Here.
Councilman Mayor? Councilman Coon?
Here.
And uh, Mr. Bullard, Conover?
Yes, sir.
All right, we got it right here. Uh, first item is wishing to motion to change the approval of the agenda. So, I recommend to make the motion that we approve it as is to respect everyone's time, let me not add anything. Pretty sure ninety percent of people came here probably using this stuff sewage. I'm guessing that'll probably take the majority of everybody's time. Uh, either, either way, I have to be out of here by seven forty-five or whatever we decide was going on sewage, general customer. Uh, but anyway, we all have that idea, I just gotta remember my time. Is there a second?
I have two items to add. Um, they were just put under comments by mistake. Um, the train depot and the port, and I would like to discuss both of those tonight.
Okay, well, I got a motion. Uh, is there a second? To approve it just with the, what is it, twelve new business items that we got. All right, I'll let it go for a couple more seconds, if not, the motion will die. And if anyone else wants to add something, ask them.
I'll say it.
Okay. All right, we got a second to keep the agenda as is, and proceed. All the favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. All the votes say a name?
Aye.
Okay, three names, one aye, names have it. Everyone would like to add, you can go ahead and add. I tried.
I also have an addition to the agenda. To authorize the town attorney to hire an independent third-party investigator to investigate allegations of hostile work environment throughout the state.
And then Council, Council Attorney, so the two items that are uh, under consideration.
Yeah, I don't have the death form.
So we're about to add the, the last one, but we guess we want to under consideration this stuff.
Yes.
Okay. You wanna make fifteen items?
I don't know, one.
Got it.
Is there a vote on the mandatory, for the, for the checkers?
Vote on it, okay. Uh, I know we could, well, vote on it.
I don't know if everything goes through.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so that's sixteen. We'll ask the attorney, I, I would think we got to like just write the ordinance and do it, but, and we'll discuss it too, but I hope we can be on that anyway. I mean, I don't.
I don't think this is being, this thing is mandated, if there is, you have to have the, so it's only a short.
Sure, right, so, and I'll bring that up here. But it's fine, we can do eighteen in case.
You don't wanna, you don't, how much you gotta draw?
Fifteen would be special. Twelve, twelve, plus the two other additions, the emissions of the water, that's fourteen. So we'll make uh, trains go on, thirteen. And uh, fourteen will be a fourth.
I got my hair, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I remember we approved the agenda this week.
Okay, you got a second? All right, all the favor of approving the agenda, would you wish to say aye?
Aye.
All the votes say a name? All right, so, we have moved, we have moved outside to approval of the minutes for the the first of uh, special. Before those for most people, we go. Okay, there's a second. All the favor say aye? All the votes say a name? All right, approved, sort of, do you like this first thing? And now we'll move on to public comment. Uh, I imagine there's probably more than three, but the three that turned there at first, they're over. Um, I think the first one was, I think Mark, that's where, fourth. So if you would just come up, take your hand off, if you, if you there, you.
Mark, how would I be there in the Hudson House on Udon Street? I got a three story, go on your house on that block. I don't know about the sewer, okay? The creepy, the kids here, they need to, with all the good, and the up, with the up costs and water and whatnot, all of that, as people, as it's being provided with extra people along the way, negative, does my bill come down? At any point, they might will see where I put up all this funding, it didn't mean any pay for all this. But if my bill come down, this people are beginning to hook up to it, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, I'll make a note on that, if I forget, just raise your hand and go, when we get to the aye. This is, can you? You can go ahead and just pick the first last name.
Thank you. Um, I have questions, the reason I'm here is um, mandatory, uh, estimated monthly bills per customer, why? And I'd love to find out a little bit more information, but I don't have anything to comment though, now.
So is it your concern that you want more information on?
Absolutely. And why is it necessary? It's really important, I, Metro six, I literally bought one for over twenty years, I have a sucker drink and I have this. And I've never had to boil my water, I'll be straight from Fort White Cass on numerous occasions, and it just, it makes no sense.
And we'll, that, that will be into when we, when we get it. Mr. Har, Mr. Har, if you would, if you would, make you come in, uh, very far, if you're not, if you, if you don't mind, if you.
Yes, Cody Boris here. I'm actually a non-resident of Fort White. Uh, we do have four duplexes in town, uh, multiple businesses in town, uh, or multiple pieces of property. Uh, I have here a petition that we worked on in the last two weeks of customers, uh, in the area that are owners of the property, if y'all like to look at it and pass it through. This'll give a little general information on what the costs are gonna be, why it would be a benefit as of now to do it versus in the future. With the nitrogen systems on the second stuff, repaired in the future, costs ten, twenty thousand dollars versus the city putting your stuff together now at no cost, so it's something I would highly recommend that you uh, take a look at. I've got two more copies if y'all wanna look at them.
Twenty-two million dollars. Just raise your hands down and give it, just a little general information. And as you guys, gentlemen, the other one, the next time petition, uh, we're also providing this. Everyone please, 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 I was like, I wanted to go to the members, everybody please, keep it down. Someone not giving it down. Please stop on, please stop, please stop, go ahead and support it.
Yeah, so, in the copy that I've provided, um, there's quite a few signatures, I think forty and fifty, um, local members, um, that signed the petition in favor of it, they may not be here for reasons unknown, um, like I said, just to let you know that there is this limited amount of force behind looking to have sewer in our town.
All right, thank you, Farin, that, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll be into the lines of the business, for people, yeah, that's, that's all.
Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Har, Mr. Har, I'm sorry. Hey, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, heard Farin, what you were saying, see, so you're not a current resident, but you are an owner, property owner, several property, now several a lot, residence on, on four duplexes, on Udon Street, property on twenty-seven, property on eighteen, all of them preventative, and I have a safe sewer.
Right, okay, same. Okay, all right, thank you, Farin. Do we have anyone else? Wow.
Oh, for?
Yes, you got, how's the comment?
Uh, yeah, well, I got a question, uh.
What, for a second, you mean?
Matthew Arnold.
Okay, Matthew Arnold?
Yeah, yeah, I am a resident, but I'm outside the city limits, just outside the city limits, and I wanna know if there's any intent to, what they're putting in, a land action areas outside the city limits.
Okay. You might touch on that a little bit as in maybe, as in, maybe, we'll see, um, when we get to the sewer part, which is the second item we got coming up. So if you had a question, uh. Is your question about just annexing property in general, or annexing property specifically like for sewage, water, or?
For sewage and water.
For sewage.
And I noticed, I got lines right all the way up, Betty Teak, or up to, or four you want.
Okay, do we have anyone else? You got something to say?
Uh, maybe first. You're on behalf of the Congress.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah. Okay, well, uh, if we have a second, and if not, we'll jump right into uh, petition and the sewage, the second aye. Okay. Item number one, so we're in public comments at the moment, but now it'll be time at the end for citizen comments, again, public comments, moving on to item number one, dissemination of misinformation, Councilman Harold, if you have any questions, you can tell me.
Yes, sir, so, uh, I added this to the agenda, and I included an email from Ken Parker with the uh, Managers Association, which we had our clerk join in, uh, but I'm gonna move that we take this time until next meeting, uh, because we have more pressing matters to deal with.
Okay, the motion table is for the next one, for the next meeting, just there a second. All the favor attending this, say aye. All right, all the votes say a name? All right, motion passing, yeah, okay, sewage. I'll allow, well, Councilman Harold wanted to, I wanna be there to, Mr. Bailey, would you want, okay.
Yep.
Okay, very well. Councilman Harold? Take your hands, take your hands.
Uh, so, um, a couple of my concerns were, uh, one of them was that the uh, plan had changed along the way. Uh, the town of Fort White had a public meeting a few years ago, and presented to the public that there was gonna be a regional wastewater treatment plant, uh, system built here in Fort White. Uh, the town, uh, is gonna be gifted the land by county, and it would be annexed into the town, the town of Fort White would get grants to build this uh, regional wastewater treatment plant, uh, up to seven hundred thousand gallons, it would be uh, expanded out into the county, take up three rivers, it's setting Spring State Park, come back into the town, and um, the county would cover the cost of operation maintenance for the town. That is not the current project, and so along the way, it's changed in many different ways, and um, the site's been changed to town of Fort White property down the other side of gun range. Uh, I was told by Brian Roche, uh, in an email that this uh, current project was going to be, um, you know, only a hundred thousand gallons, and then um, I asked him about what happened to the regional, and he said that's down the road somewhere, and he said that's not gonna be in town for a while. So, that started raising some red flags, just started giving me more information, and uh, I reached out to Greg Bailey recently, and thankfully, he has answered some questions for me, and so, um, one of my concerns was that that one hundred thousand gallon build out was not even big enough to handle the entire town of Fort White. So why are we building a sewage treatment plant that's only gonna cover half of the town? Um, Mr. Bailey said that, um, that it could be expanded up to, I think around three hundred thousand gallons, um, Mr. Bailey, but the spray field potential at that side is only around two hundred thousand gallons, uh, spray field capacity. So, that potential spray field capacity would theoretically be enough to cover the entire town. So, that part has been laid to rest. Um, he said conceptually, we could build another facility there at that size to go up to, you know, seven hundred thousand gallons potentially, or conceptually, so there's not enough spray field areas there, so, that's the hurdle with doing the regional, um, wastewater treatment. So, my concern, main concern of it being not able to handle the whole town has been um, addressed by Mr. Bailey, and I'm comfortable with his response that at least we can build one big enough there for the entire town of Fort White. My second concern was the financial plan, or lack of a financial plan, so, um, we in the council are considering moving forward with building a multi-million dollar utility that we do not have a financial plan for. Now, the mayor talked about some ideas, but we don't have a plan. There was no feasibility study done for this new plan, it's not one of the recommendations in the original feasibility plan. None of the recommendations in the original feasibility plan involve the town of Fort White operating and maintaining this sewage treatment plant. Those options were the town build it, the county run it, the county build it, the county run it, or the town do nothing. So, this has not been studied, there's been no environmental impact study on the current site, and we have no time here to our feasibility plan. So, I'm here to say, I'm not totally against sewer for Fort White, I just would like to see some numbers, I would like to see a plan, that's it. I haven't seen them yet. The mayor presented an idea, it wasn't a complete plan. Now, there are people who can put together a complete, complete plan for us, there's gentlemen in the audience, not, Mike New, he uh, works for a company, and they handle operations for utilities, water and sewage. We talked briefly, he said, I can put together a proposal for the town of Fort White to run your operations for both plants, and he, you know, I could ask him to speak later, if he likes, but um, you know, I, I just don't understand moving forward with something and you don't know what it's gonna cost each household. You don't know what this lady right here's gonna have to pay each month, I don't know what I'm gonna have to pay each month, and there's no projections. The original feasibility plan, or facility plan, said that the average bill would be around thirty-something dollars. I don't think that that's accurate. So, those were my concerns, if anybody here would like to shed light on any of these questions, and questions that the audience has, but, you know, I, I'll be for, moving forward with this, and the town benefiting from this huge grant, if we can prove that it's, it's doable, and I think that it was said last meeting, that if the town can't do it, there's always authority. But I've been told that the authority is not a given, that that's an agreement between Swan County and Columbia County, we are not in their service here. Uh, Mr. Bullard, can you shed some light on that, you touched on that?
Uh, there's a, uh, for those of you who may or may not be aware of this, Columbia County and Swan County collectively, uh, signed a law agreement with an entity that they created, called Florida Water Utility Authority, and their coverage area, which they have to register in the state of Florida, does not include Lake City, Lava, Grandford, or Fort White, because in the Florida Constitution, there's something called home rule, which means the municipalities have the right to make their own rules, the county can't come in and say, we're gonna include them, because they're not allowed, they're simply not allowed to do that in the Florida Constitution. So you're right, you're not included in the North Florida Regional Utility Coverage Area. In order for that to happen, the utility authority, as well as the town, would have to enter into an agreement to allow that to happen, then the utility authority would apply to the state to get permission to include a municipality, because the barrier is the municipality has to agree to count that the, the water authority can force them to, if that makes, if that makes sense.
Okay, and so, for that to happen, Swan County would have to be in agreement along with Columbia County, because they make up the utility for it. So, that authority has an equal contribution model from Columbia County and Swan County, and Swan County may not want to take on the utility that's in the red, because that would increase the amount of money they have to put in, and it's not for the benefit of their residents, because we're in Columbia County. So, the authority's not a given. We've already went back to the county, top and down, there was no interest in that. So let's say we do it, we fail, well, the Florida statute say that if a utility fails, Mr. Bullard, again, what would, what would the law say about a failed utility?
So I'll have to get back to all that, um, and to answer that question more fully, because I don't know a hundred percent answer, and I don't wanna get here and tell you something wrong.
Right, but, but generally, I'm told that it would fall on the county that it's in, and so then the county would have to come in and say today, and is it fair to the county to have a utility thrown in their lap that is not able to generate enough revenue to support its cost of operation and maintenance? And uh, I've been told by some people at the county that no, we do not want to have in the middle of our budget year, a utility thrown on our lap that can't survive on its own, because then we would have to come up with money, and that's not proven responsible. So anyhow, um, and then, uh, you know, the bottom line is, then the county would have to decide whether or not to save it, or go to the state government and say, you know, we're, we're not able to do this, so, and then where would we be living? But, so that's my concern. It's not over here sewage, you know, I live right there at the red line, so, it, it's residential ain't commercial, I mean, it's a prime piece of property that could gain value with central sewage, you know, but I'm not looking at driving the price of my piece of property up, just because it's in the prime, you know, at the intersection, at the light, you know, it, 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 it value that could decrease, you know, uh, much, but that's not my concern, my concern is doing what's right for the residents of Fort White, and I wanna know the impact to each and every household, even business owner, I wanna know what the cost to the business owner is, everybody deserves to have that, that's, that's my concern.
Okay, before I address, um, your legitimate concern, because they are legitimate, does any other Councilor have any thoughts?
I do. So, the information you're being presented is cut towards one side, so if everyone don't know by now, we can give a pretty good dollar grade. So, what's it, just need to know is, the bottom line is, you're gonna do it by force or you're gonna do it by choice? That's the only option that we have, the only thing we're gonna vote on tonight, if it doesn't go for, is that we just start prolonging it till D E P gets in here. You have to look up Indian River Shore to see what they did at Indian River Shores, because we are a municipality that's in the middle of Swan, Itchukka, and the Sanatang, they won't be septic off of the, the river. So, saying that you're gonna keep your septic, that's not true, you're gonna have to upgrade to a different septic system, which costs you about twenty-five thousand dollars. So, and then you'll have to get certification, and, and, but they don't care about that, it doesn't meet code. So you're not gonna be able to keep your current septic. So, so you're gonna have, you're not gonna be able to keep your sewage system regardless. So, the, the bottom line is, you're gonna do it by force, or you're gonna do it by choice? If we do it, if we lose these twenty-two million dollars one way or another, eventually it's gonna be done. So, I mean, I, I don't, I don't get the, the, and I understand what Mr. Harold is saying, but, Mr. Harold is new, I am new, and I don't think it's fair to lose a twenty-two million dollar grant, because you wanna go back and do research and information that should've been done three years ago. So we're on a time limit, we're on a time constraint, we don't have time to go back and do things that should've been done before it was even agreed upon. So now we are here, so we either deal with it, we get on the train, or we get off, and once, if we agree not to, you might as well hang up our shoelaces, you're not gonna have the control of what the cost is, you're not gonna have the control, if they, they require you to, to hook up right now, you won't be charged to hook up, because it's included in the grant. But if you sit here, and you wait, and you play these little games that should've been done three or four years ago, it's twenty-two million dollars gone, and whatever they say that you have to do as a resident, you'll have to do it.
I was just gonna echo what, um, Mr. Harold said concerning the, once we have the structure built with a three twenty-two thousand dollar grant, or we don't have the operating cost to run it, so, we can put it until we're dry, the town of Fort White, and then ask for assistance, and that assistance will come from someone, if not the county, someone willing to take on a loss, and not a lot of businesses are willing to take on a loss. Um, it's my understanding through Florida law that the county would have to accept it, if we are not able to do it. So it's a difficult decision either way.
The new septic tank laws has passed, okay? It is an expensive septic tank, you will have to put it, they're not enforcing it right now because they're in court battling it, okay? It is already passed, passed a couple months ago, there, there is a battle right now, somebody is battling it, they, they, you know, the state will win, it might not be this month, it might be six months, but they're gonna start enforcing these laws, you're gonna have to put these expensive septic tanks in when you have a problem. Yes, if your drainage field goes bad, they're not gonna let you put a new drainage field in, you got to go to the system, that, that's just the way it is. I don't want it, I mean, nobody wants it, but it's being pushed on for it, it's already happening, and because we're close to the river. And because we're close to the river, they're pushing us harder. And, right now, we got this gap, everybody hooked up free, yes, we're gonna have a monthly bill. But with that other septic tank, once you pay twenty thousand dollars for it, you're gonna have a three hundred dollar monthly fee. And you got two, two inspections a year that you gotta pay for with that new septic tank.
Is this your whole system? That's that's what you mean construction?
That's for.
Okay, so that's why I have, so that's what that new, a role they're gonna play. They have a three top system for you.
Oh, that's your recovery system?
Your new system, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Ma'am, you have, what's your name, please?
I have that, my name is Angela.
Oh, you don't, you don't, you don't have that yet?
I have that.
You didn't pay twenty thousand dollars for it?
I'm only gonna say it, what did it cost you?
No, she has, she has an upgrade system, but it's not the not.
No, it's not the one.
What did you pay my lawyer?
It's their role, he shouldn't roll the table.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Uh, Claire, how's your work?
You've got a question about, you know, I'm not a volunteer in this world. But I've been, I'm a member of the government, and I've been told that that's some property that you're gonna use for your golden, whatever. You've got pocket, you've got inside. Yes, that property was a dump. That's gonna be EPA, that's gonna be a lot of other stuff.
That's not in there yet. That's not in the in our sector right now.
Okay, but I'm saying, if you're gonna try to build on that dump, you're gonna get the EPA involved, you're gonna get the state involved, and you just can't build on it. It's all kind of regulations.
Right, okay, yeah. Come on, go ahead, come on, come on, go ahead, stop here.
Uh, so I did talk to Greg Bailey about the concern with the gun range, lead presence for gun range, been there for thirty plus years, never any lead clean up. And also um, the the dump issue. And so um, actually, I talked to Brian Roach before. And so Brian Roach told me the current phase we're in now is not affected by the gun range property. But the next phase, this next phase that the the governor just proved, that that spray field does uh potentially overlap uh shooting range. And so I said, well, would DPP be done there? And he said, we might have to do some lead cleaning up for the next phase. And so we just removed, you know, put earth, replace it, and then move forward with that spray field. And then any future expansions on that gun range property, that they would have to look at the presence of lead and or the.
Yeah, that could be up to twenty two million dollars, real quick, just tell.
Right.
All right, we'll take some questions.
But but I will say, Mr. Bailey has recently identified that there may be other land there that would affect the gun range. And would allow possibly some some added on spray fields for future expansions. That was one thing that he has addressed, we did, if that's I have concerns about that.
Anything else up here on the council? Before I can do my, I have two seconds.
I would like to.
Please, uh, go ahead and say that, please.
I, I wanted to present, yeah, I'm a resident, my wife and I are residents of Fort White.
What's your name?
Mike, Michael. Um, and so based on, you guys have a twenty two million dollar grant, correct? To build the sewage, just a, is it the hundred thousand gallon or is it the seven hundred thousand gallon? Because if you build a hundred thousand gallon, that's not big enough, and you're gonna have to build a larger one. So you're already gonna be charged for the smaller one, and then they're just gonna charge you again, isn't that double difference?
Okay, so, so I'm gonna answer. First, anything else, you know, before I get mine?
I didn't answer that one.
Okay, um. Well, let me take it from the top, I'll start off by maybe answering some of these uh questions that I wrote down. Yours yours kind of ties in to somebody else as far as if there's hookups, will the price change, will the wealth gonna go down? As there are additional hookups. If I'm understanding your question correctly. So, but before I get into that, let me get, let me answer some of the assumptions that I don't think are necessarily true assumptions that I've just stated here so far. I heard it, uh, Councilman Harold, I think he said something about, well, the plant isn't regional in nature. If you had a workshop in July, there is nothing that prevents this plant from being regional. The only thing that prevents this plant from being regional, right out of the gate, is DPP is only willing to fund us in phases. That's it. We'll start off with a nine point eight million dollar grant, fifty thousand gallon a day plant, a hundred paying customers to be hooked up approximately. A twelve million grant, already approved, double that, capacity to approximately a hundred thousand gallons a day, approximately double the number of customers hooked up. And so on and so forth, and so on and so forth. And, this was always the understanding, the DPP was never gonna give us a hundred million to slide out to hook up a whole town of Fort White, all of Itchuckmi, all of Three Rivers. That was never, that's that's not true, that's a misconception, it was always to be in phases, which is what's happening now. So, as far as it not being regional in nature, I I don't know who said that's true, but it was the DPP, but I had a call with them, multiple calls, actually. Most recent one was last week, with like half of us. Um, there was something else I wanted to say about the regional. Oh yes, the constraint that came up uh in the July workshop about what what could potentially prevent the plant from being regional is if we do all of the spray fields on those two parcels. There's no reason why we have to do that. It could very easily, baby said this, I call it water, I call it DPP, it could very easily be piped. Mile, half a mile, two miles, however far outside of town, it's sprayed somewhere else. But as far as the trains, the gallons themselves, the fifty thousand gallon a day capacity trains, they're not that large compared to forty, fifty, twenty, ten acres either. So, a seven hundred and fifty gallon a day capacity plant could fit, right? The geographical footprint could fit all those parcels that we have. Could we also have the spray fields there co-located with it? No, that will run into an issue. Do we have to have spray fields there? Oh, no, we don't, we don't. So I don't know where this came from, I don't see anything, I spoke to DPPs, they don't see anything that intrinsically prevents this from being regional in nature. Okay, one. Let's see here. Okay, two, the lack of a financial plan. Councilman Harold brought it up. And I and I and I did the presentation uh in the July workshop. There's a lack of a financial plan technically, because we haven't voted on it, but there's not a lack of options, there are options. And, you know, we're all new up here, but as soon as I got here, I always understood, speaking to former council members, it was always kinda understood that if the revenue was from the water, we took back over the water plant, and and we may or may not, but if we did, we could fund the sewage plant. At least until we continue to expand it and we continue to bring in more and more revenue. And I showed guys, our PowerPoint is on the town website, if anybody wants to go to the town website. And there'll probably be a little banner that'll pop up, you can click on that link, or you can just exit out of the banner on the left-hand side, it's that it's that town news or update. Go there, um, scroll to the bottom, there's the attachments, there's the PowerPoints, there's everything. If we have time, if we have it, maybe I can just show it, I'm sure probably people might want to see it. I'll see if we can show it again. So, again, i- i- if there's a lack of a financial plan, it's because your council hasn't voted on it. That, two, oh, okay, and and so let me touch on that again. The utility, the North Florida Water Utility Authority, yes, is comprised of, and you got a member here, you got me wrong, two Columbia County Commissioners, two Swan County Commissioners, is that it for now?
They take one, they have one more person.
One more, oh, what was it?
Other person on it that is selected, and that person right now is from Columbia County, correct? It's Mr. Dick, it's Mr. uh.
David Dick.
David.
Okay. Okay. Uh, yeah, so, it's true, right, technically they have, so say it goes belly up. We fail to manage it properly, or we realize, hey, this for whatever reason didn't accord or align with our projections, it's way more expensive, it could happen. It's true, it may not go to the utility authority. It's a utility authority, it likely probably can go to the utility authority. If it doesn't, City of Lake City has already, we had a regional stakeholders meeting, where it was City of Lava, Fort White, Columbia County, Swan County, and a few other stakeholders, utility stakeholders, across both counties that were there, and the City of Lake City was there. The City of Lake City manages the largest utilities in Columbia County, that they got over there, and they said it flat out. And you can go watch the video, they said, hey, there is an appetite in Lake City to help Fort White with their deterrence. So, that's why I say we have options, utility authority, options, City of Lake City, potentially, an option. Okay, that's as far as the financial side of it for for that. As far as the utility authority not taking plants because they're in the red, my understanding is that the the only utility, the utility authority could potentially here currently have, or soon could potentially have, depending on how we vote, that doesn't run in the red, is the Fort White water. Okay, so if the utility authority is not taking utilities that are in the red, there's no utility. But I think the utility authority sees what some other people see, which is, hey, yes, okay, they start off that way for a while, but that obviously isn't the end goal, to stay in the red perpetually. And as you get more and more hookups, and again, the projection that we had, the numbers that we can show it, we're gonna be in the red. Okay, let me second, I'm working my little, what I was able to write down. Okay, as far as bit, well, let me let me put a pin in that, and and let me go back and talk about what's going on as far as regulations and DPP, and how they're looking at this. One of the most precious precious natural resources that we have in the state of Florida is our water. I I don't think anyone knows that or just. The amount of money the state legislature and Senate and the governor himself has been giving, and you can go online and just check this out, for uh water and wastewater renovation, the treatment plants, et cetera, et cetera, is like, I don't wanna mispoke, but I think it's in the billions, yearly, annually, annually. So, if you read the tea leaves, sewage is coming, and people are hooking up. And it's not because Fort White said it, it's because the state of Florida has prioritized their natural resources, and that's just where it's going. And as it exists right now, yes, there is a statute that says, if sewage is available, available, right? And what available means is if that plant has capacity, then they can hook you up. It's available, it access, you're hooking up, by law. So what happens if we don't build it? Okay, so we don't build the sewage plant. The utility authority, they're not gonna sit around and wait, they're gonna get funding, they've already got funding, they're gonna get a sewage plant, whether it's in Ellisville, and they run it close to Fort White, or wherever they get it. Now what? Now it's available, now you're hooking up, and now we don't have the rights. But, the common denominator there is that it's coming. You can postpone it a few years, I'll give you that, you can you can do that. And again, I'm not saying in the long run, we shouldn't go with the utilities here. I'm just, do we really wanna give up the opportunity for the town, for the town of Fort White to own it and operate it and manage it for a couple years? I've seen the situation is with the expansions, and then be able to decide and negotiate. Those are the real questions. Right, because everything, you know, it's kinda like this in politics, uh, we don't want taxes, okay, let me cut social security, no, 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 wait. Okay, so it's always, as opposed to what? I don't wanna pay, as opposed to what? As opposed to paying anyway later, anyway? Okay, second thing, Councilman Coon, I think uh Councilman Harris may have touched on this as well. Uh, yeah, it's it's tied up in some, uh, I think in court right now. Some of it also, I think, uh, DPP haven't, has not uh mandated in our area, and they could, and at any given moment, it could be tomorrow, it could be a year from now, it could be two, three years from now, I I don't know, I'm not a prophet. But, those nitrogen reducing septic tanks, at some point, in the relatively near future, I think that's a pretty safe assumption. Given that there's some areas of Florida where it's already mandated right now, state of Florida doesn't care if you just pay five thousand dollars for a old one, you're getting a new one, and you're paying, and it's fifteen K. That's how law, you know, so, I don't love it, I just got a new one. You know, I had the out-of-pocket, no, it was just a drain field, and I had an out-of-pocket, I had four, four thousand. It sucks, I I mean, I get that, it's it's not that I don't understand the pain, I get the pain, is that is this pain versus that pain, which pain is worse, you have to decide. And then consider, if you got an out-of-pocket fifteen K, you just got a new system, and you're like, oh, good, I got a new system, and now sewage is available, and DPP says, oh, sorry, you're crap out of luck, I don't care about the fifteen K, shut that down here with that. Something like that will happen to somebody. And, okay, let me see what else, uh, I think I need one or two more things. Oh, yes, this was touched on, I was gonna reiterate, it with the grant funding that the county had, hookups are free. They're free. Boom, you got sewage, yeah, you can walk to build, that's how that goes. If we don't use this grant funding, we'll hook up, and it will not be free. So, I'll leave that out there. And let me see, I think okay, I want, and I wanna answer, I think, two of the questions here. And I and I and I had it on PowerPoint, I went over it with people from North Florida, you can look around at different um rates that other municipalities charge. And you can just Google what the average is in the state of Florida. But, typically, what it boils down to, average rate across the state, what it will cost you for sewage is approximately twice what you pay for water. Approximately one half. So if you pay for water thirty bucks a month? Who pays for water? Twenty five. Twenty six. Okay, multiply that by two, add it together, fifty-two plus twenty-six, math morays might not do it, but that would be what you pay. And realistically, what you're looking at on average, your average residential, right, your average residential, and you're gonna be looking at anywhere from eighty, approximately, Mr. Miller, please be respectful. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. So approximately seventy-five to a hundred-ish dollars, a lot of that will also depend on your use, right, if you use less water, uh, it's gonna be less. So, people were asking a lot about the rates, very fair question, that's what everybody cares about, but the bottom line to me, that's approximately on average, what you're gonna be looking at. As far as what specifically we set as the rate, hey, what will be the base rate, the rate, what will we charge per thousand gallons, monthly, we'll have to set that rate. We'll have to set that rate, but from now till when the sewage plant may may come in, we'll have time to do that study and set that rate. Uh, specifically, but if we're anything like the rest of Florida, it's gonna be approximately that. Um, as there are more, so I I I get the impression based on some of the questions that that were asked, that the price might change, like, hey, if we're guinea pigs and we hook up additionally, will we be char, like, will we be charged additional, and will the rate go down? So you're not gonna be charged additional, right, the rate will be rate. Potentially, could the rate with a sufficient number of hookups go down? Probably, I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm not gonna promise that. Right, because managing the utility, I don't think I'm ever gonna be like, yeah, let's let's have less money to manage the utility. And that's why I'm not popular, I'm just gonna be honest. And that's probably not popular, but I'm just gonna be honest. So, you won't be charged really too much more or less depending on how many hookups there are that I can reasonably force these. Uh, both marks, actually, it was two marks. I think I had that question. Uh, and then, no, you're the other mark. Are you the other mark? With the white hat?
No, Matt.
Matt, okay, sorry, I put mark, um. Will we annex properties uh, to run utilities to them? I don't know. That's a question for the Capitol. As far as getting utilities, we could, so, I mean, there are really two options. There's two options if you're going to get utilities from Fort White. So if you were to get utilities from Fort White, the one option would be, yes, annexation. The second option would be, we can run utilities, and then we'd have to go through the county, and they would have to give us the easement. And, you know, either make it mandatory hookups, um, and we would have to negotiate that probably, like, what the rate would be, depending on what we thought was feasible, or, or whatnot.
Okay, lots of good wondering, does the City of Fort White have enough population that hookups in Fort White could get?
So, uh, uh, okay, and, and, and so, I can jump in, it's like three slides, do y'all want to see the PowerPoint with the numbers? Yeah, okay. Actually, before I say that, Kelly, do we have it?
Um, not the flash drive. Um, wait, it might be, it might be on this one, not that one.
Oh, it's on that one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What about the, what about the thumb drive?
It's at my desk.
Oh, was it there?
Can I run grab it?
Hmm.
I'll run grab it, we'll be back in five minutes.
Uh, is there Wi-Fi? Oh, no. And it's not on here? It's not on this? Oh. Actually, hold on. That's not a problem. I think I have it ready. All right, everybody can, yeah, um, can everybody see that well? Should we turn the lights off? Yeah, can we turn the front one on? Nah, turn off. Or he can just go back. No, 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 you go back. Lights off. Everybody keep a hand to yourselves, please? Uh, before I proceed here, uh, where is it, Castle? There you are. If you want to just stand up, say your name, go ahead and see.
Yeah, I'll come over there.
Okay, oh, you go there.
I can still walk right now. My name is Steve Castro, I've, I've been a resident of Fort White for twenty years, this month. And I think a lot, like a lot of you all, twenty years ago, we heard, we're gonna get wastewater treatment, we're gonna get that grocery store, or we're gonna really go, go hell bent, we're gonna be a nice little place. Since then, we've had a lot of meetings. Uh, and Mr. Mayor, I, I, I've got two things here. A couple of meetings ago, we asked, was there a timeline to make this, this project happen? I don't think anybody has seen a timeline yet. Two meetings ago, two months ago, we were still out there trying to work on easements. I don't think anybody knows, other than maybe one or two of you all, how the easements are, or what's the projected use of this twenty-two millions. When in the calendar are we going to get down there? The other thing is, as I looked at this before it came to me, what I don't understand is you have a lot of good information in here, why the hell wasn't that put out to everybody? You sent me two envelopes, but had two different pieces of information in them. One of them, uh, was not the agenda, it was, I think, Mr. Harold's, uh, some kind of paper he put out. Uh, but where was the rest of this? Okay, a lot of this, well, what you're gonna go over will explain the concern we have. And the concern we have is, one, who's in control? Do we have a project manager? I know North Florida did all your engineering early on this. We've had a nice little map, we've had a nice little, what we thought was gonna be a timeline. I don't think anybody has seen any of that, other than maybe yourselves, since then. So all of us here have the same questions, that we had three months ago, that we had in January, Chris, okay? When, how, can we afford it? And if not, what are the pros and cons of what we're gonna do? I think all of us want sewer systems. My God, if we can't get a grocery store without one, why do you need a sewer system? So I guess the question that I had is, why can't you get your act together, put all this kind of information out so that we all know where we stand? Then when we come in here, we can ask legitimate questions. The question thing, as I have, where the hell is the timeline on the twenty-two million dollar expenditure? Where is it gonna be spent? Where are we, we're gonna be running out of it in the middle of the month? Next month, is it going to be done by the end of the year? Okay? And do we have enough funds to handle that? That's what we're all asking. And so far, you guys have failed again. I asked myself, are you, do you consider yourself as the mayor to be the project manager for this vast engineering project?
No.
Who is?
I don't know.
Tell me, who is the project manager who sees the timeline, so we, now wait a minute, not the engineering guys provided you the engineering for it?
So, Mr. Castle, hold on, okay, wait, wait, so can I, can I recall?
Certainly, I'm, I'm really done, I just,
Okay.
I just think to make this thing work, you have to convince us, one, you know what you're doing, which I don't think right now, if we had the vote, I don't think anybody'd get it up, up there, okay? And, and two, the expenditure of funds and grants and all of that, we don't really care about that, but someone like a project manager should care about that. So that they can come to these meetings and give us a, here's where we stand, this is where we're going. We're all gonna get that sewer system. We're all gonna get it. We know that, you know that.
Why can't you have the grocery store without a sewer system?
Pardon me?
Why can't you have the grocery store without a sewer system?
Wait, hold on, wait, now, I have a question. Mr., Mr. Castro, have you friends that have a sewer system? Mr., 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 we're not, we're not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do that.
I'm just, I don't know.
Great, great question. We can't, I don't know, that's not the question first. So, let me, um, first of all, address a couple of Mr. Castro points. And, I'll just go beyond with you people. I'm beyond with you. A lot of this information hasn't come out because even the town council, I don't think anybody up there really had it and could articulate it, and really put it out, until we had the, uh, workshop in July, which is when all this, I mean, I, I, to be fair, why didn't it go out? If anybody cares to check the website, I'm just, I'm just, wait, I, I want to get to your points, your points are legitimate, but I'm just saying, as of for now, almost three weeks, it has been out. I agree with you. Three weeks is not enough time, this information should have probably been out in January, February, I agree with you, you're absolutely right.
And you're assuming that everybody is gonna go to the website. Some of us do go to the website, because some of us are retired, and we're aware our day is on the website.
Yeah, no.
Okay, some of them aren't retired.
So, let me, let me say this, yes. You're right, some of us, some of us.
I don't get on websites at all, I'm a technophobe, or can I get hard copy on there?
Well, uh, give me the other one. I, I'll probably be gone, that's Kelly, that's me, yeah. Um, yeah, no, listen. Look, I got elected in November, I don't have an excuse as to why I didn't hit the ground running sooner, didn't make this my priority sooner. I think you were at some of the meetings, and you saw why I perhaps didn't make it my priority sooner. But that's not an excuse, and I'm not making an excuse. And I'm a mayor, and I'm coming out of being an officer in the Marine Corps, and I will not make an excuse. I should have done that, flat out, and I'll say that to the residents, period. I have no issue saying that, and taking that on the chain. Now, as soon as I could, get my feet under me, I did start doing research, and I did call that workshop that we had in July a few weeks ago. And so I do think now, perhaps, there's a better grip on it, you know, than, than before. As far as who, who, who the designated project manager, I know North Florida works with us, and they're the engineers, and they've been working with us with the bids, and they have all the, drew up the the specs, I'll call them specs for lack of a better term, and we have bids that came in. As far as who will monitor the contractors doing the work, that's something that we would, I spoke a little bit about with North Florida, I don't think that was part of the contract we have so far, I don't, I don't know if I can read it, my understanding is that it wasn't. That would be covered by some of the grant funding, from my understanding, including the D E Ps, so that's something we'd have to work with North Florida on so that every, I, I, I don't know how, because I don't know if every once in a while, they'd send someone, just make sure the angles, whatever the case may. Uh, to answer that. I will say, and I think it's a good first step, now that we have these new clerks, that we took it upon herself, to, and, yes, I helped her with some of the verbiage of the formatting, uh, to give some of the information, some of the information, um, on the town website, and what we're trying to do and establish with that is, hey, every once in a while, if there's a major project, maybe over time, people will realize, well, hey, maybe let's check the town website, maybe they post their update. You know, and I understand, you're absolutely right, not everybody works with that, regardless, that's just not how that goes. But, good point, I don't disagree. I, I don't even disagree with you, that if there was a vote of confidence among the residents, is, hey, is this council up until this point cohesive enough, on the same page enough, aligned with the same vision enough to really do this, and see and do it, make it work? I agree with you, I don't know that we wouldn't get that vote of confidence. I'm, I'm, I'm just being honest. I, I, I'm just being honest. I can do what I can do, I try to do what I can do, I'm not perfect. So I'll say that on my end, I accept responsibility for whatever falls on me as the mayor, as the head of that council. Even though I'm a weak mayor, but whatever, as the head of that council.
I, I'm not throwing, I'm not throwing rocks at you, okay? I'm just saying that, you know, we, we've been at this a long time, and we're, we're still not, yes, maybe you're further along, I liked some of this presentation, but we're to the point where you can be an old Marine Corps guy, I'm a Navy guy, I had a Red Buller said, one time, if you don't have anybody in charge, you're gonna lose the battle. And, and my point is, we as your, your citizens of, of the town, right now, we don't know where we're going with this, because we have the same questions now, pretty much at every meeting. Right? So, so something's not happening, and something's not working right. Okay?
Yeah.
Now, if you're under contract, and I saw all of those Now, if you're under contract, and I saw all those contracts that are out there for bids, my God, I don't think any of us are going to waste the time on the website. See, the kicker is, if you wanted to print that off, you'd have fifty, seventy pages worth of contractual gap. None of us are going to do that, we don't want to do that, we want you guys to do that. All we want to be told is, hey, look, here's this project, it's started, we're right here, this is where we're going, and we're going to make it by this date, and we got a grant to cover all that, and all you want to get to worry about.
Oh, yes, okay, yes, thank you, your, your other, it's up to the timeline. So, as of right now, we have the nine point eight million dollar grant.
Do you?
Okay, yeah, yeah, we got it. The twelve million dollar grant, I don't know how it works at the state level, if it was like allocated to us, but we have to do some commencement paperwork. And then we'll be able to start using it against that twelve million. That's not as much of a priority right now, because we have the ten million, but that's kind of how that works, so I mean, as far as the money being there, the money, the money's there. And another thing that we can do is, yes, we have some money in the town to cover large expenditures as it relates to this project. The other thing we can do is, say, a bill comes in, like, like to your point, say, next, I don't know, whatever, next July, we get a bill for two million dollars, do we have two million cash? No, but we don't need two million cash. We'll submit an advance reimbursement request to the state, they'll say, ah, yes, okay, here you go back, pay it to the vendor. So, as far as building, as far as using the nine point eight million, and then later on the twelve million, that's not really as big of an option. Hey, the timeline is, it was supposed to be, we're supposed to have decided on by now, but, but I'm not going to. And I think one of the vendors, one of the vendors is in here that put a bid in. I don't know, one of the, one of the companies that put a bid in, the vendor, oh, they're right, okay. I believe he said he needed approximately, I don't know, ten or so months, almost. So ideally, yes, we would have voted, we would have selected the vendors at, in the end of July, and at this point, we'd be working on having those pre-construction meetings, making sure the contracts are signed, and going back and forth, so that they can set a start date for construction. The, the buffer period that I got, that ideally we have, is fourteen months from beginning to end. Ideally, we wouldn't cross that threshold, that's kind of the two lows, I think even that is closer than probably, you know, North Florida, or even the vendors, or even we would. So, but that puts, so you have it till the end of next year, to use this nine point eight million, that gives us till one October to start construction, and that's bare, bare, bare bones. That's not in a situation where we really want to be, but that's a situation that we're in, realistically, because we haven't already made that decision. So, that's, I got multiple things going on here. So,
Fair, I believe the statements Castro made, the statements that you responded to, I think other council members might look back and also provide some input.
Yeah, okay, thank you, fair point. I'm going to put a pause on here for a second, and let that go. Then I got to finish this, and.
Respectfully, I think you're ruminating the same information that we've talked about for months. I think we're here tonight to make a vote. I think a projected date of Phase One construction is approximately fourteen months. And that Phase One would incorporate approximately a hundred and thirty-three residents of Fort White. And I, I think you are not in that Phase One.
No, no, I'm in, I'm in, I'm in Phase Three or Four, we're going to see it for a couple of years.
So, I wanted to say that, and just to touch on the grocery store, I think us having, not having a grocery store is as much about low population in this area, as well as septic versus sewage. Because, you know, build it, they will come, build the grocery store, and they're not going to come from Gainesville, or come from Stark, to come to the grocery store. And general grocery stores want a population base, and they will come. And I'm not at all against the grocery store, don't misunderstand that. But again, I think it's kind of, we proceed with the vote, unless you all have something else to add, rather than, again, ruminate the same information that's not really alluding to much.
I was ready to vote in July, this council, what I recommended was the one called this workshop to educate the people, and now I'm here trying to educate the people. I'm ready for a vote, no problem, I like that, that's good. We, go ahead.
So, Mr. Castro, I'd like to answer your question. Is any North Florida professional services master contract to assist the town Fort White project manager? So, they are our project managers, because we have no one at the town that can manage that project.
Do you see a timeline laid out?
Uh, Mr. Bailey could probably expand on that, but Ms.
God, there is to do as a council person.
I have.
Because if you haven't seen the timeline, we sure haven't seen the timeline.
So, I have an understanding that as soon as we vote to award this bid, construction will start on the first thing, which was.
Now, in the audience, y'all, please keep it down, please keep it down in the audience.
And that will provide a hundred and thirty-three parcels with, our sewer service. And then as soon as that project is finished, the next grant will pick up and move forward, and we'll add a hundred and forty more, and that's now called Phase Two.
All right, hold, hold, hold on, hold on. There's a council member who wants to make a motion. So, there are two, obviously, the lowest bidder is, I wrote it down here, Commercial Industrial Port, and the other one is SGS Contracting Services.
How are the hundred and thirty-three parcels determined?
Oh, oh, hold on, uh. Those are the two lowest bidders, Commercial Industrial Port and SGS Contracting Services. There's a motion to be made.
I'll afford it.
To proceed with this. I'll afford it, I got to be five in our area. So, if we want to give another ten, fifteen minutes, it's got to be on the next minute, never break off the depth.
Well, I, I might clarify that the reason I insisted on this meeting is exactly what Mr. Castro touched on. Is all this has been going on, but the residents haven't been getting all the information. I stand by my statement that this is no longer a regional project. Now, after I questioned it, they said, oh, conceptually can be. But I have a email from Ron Rosen right here, says, the project we're working on is not a regional project.
Correct.
I called Tallahassee for that reason, and she pulled the grants, and she sent them to me. And the grant was submitted as a regional. Amendment one, it was regional, amendment two, it was no longer regional, and now it's a town of Fort White project. So, the town needs to know these things, that's why we're at this meeting today. I don't have a problem with y'all voting for it, but I've had concerns about no transparency for the residents of this town. No financial plan. There, from the beginning, this has been a mandatory hookup, the plan has always been mandatory hookup. Have all of y'all been told that? No. And guess what? Since it's going to be mandatory hookup, if we force passing ordinance to require mandatory hookup for sewage, and we insist it, because this is for the environment, the river, we're going to make sure every household, every second tank in this town is done away with, and every, it's going to be run in every home in this town. And if you don't currently have water, we need to include the water service to be run with the sewage, because the sewage is based on the water. So those people that choose not to have water right now, use the well, pay a hundred dollars to, you know, that's not going to be an option, because if we do an ordinance that requires mandatory hookup, and I hook up to the water, so they'll know how much it costs.
In the audience, y'all keep it down, please, I can't, I can't hear what you're saying.
But this is the grant application submitted by the town, that says mandatory hookup, yes. It also says there was a public outreach. Have any of y'all been contacting it by mail before today? This is the first public outreach. This is an application that was sent in July seventeen, twenty twenty-four. There was a public outreach component, all of y'all have been reached out to in the past. The town invites the public to the meeting, and they provide help there to the residents. Now, I don't know that that was by design, I'm just going to put it out there for you. I don't know if that was all part of the plan, let's just keep the residents in the dark with it, pushing through.
Okay, vote, vote, wait. So, using that argument, everything the town council has ever done, has been in the dark and pushing it through, because we've never done a mass mail-out to everyone. So, part of it is about characterizing, is that, I don't know right now, but y'all, everybody wait, everybody please, hold on for a second. But again, here we have, again, these same misconceptions that keep trying to address, that just keep coming up. Council material said something about a motion, but there's a motion ready to be made.
I have a motion that we proceed with, accept the debate of commercial industrial contract A, with the amount of seven, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. Start the.
And there are two portions, there was A and B, there was A. Low bid for the FGS, we can do one side, we can do one side. That's the motion, just there a second.
Uh, sir.
Okay. All of you say aye?
Aye.
All opposed in aye?
Neat.
Okay, three to one, ask this, uh, commercial industrial, is that, what about for B? Is there a motion, I think SGS Contracting Services was the low bid for that one. Let's ask our engineer, let's ask our engineer first, for a second.
Yes, sir.
I, I know I spoke with you over the phone, but just to make sure there were no concerns with either of those two low bids, or was there?
The town's signal, hopefully, is we've got, we've got two bids for two different parts of the project. One was the Lightwood Plant, one was.
Greenfield Flowers.
One is the collection transmission system. One is just a red collection transmission system. That one, uh, to all clarity is over our estimate, so it requires some negotiation with the contractor. Once you report with that, I can't do anything, two, to make that decision to award, award the contract. The other one, the one you're asking about now is SGS, that is for the wastewater plant itself. These, we're moving forward, they need to be acted on, timeline.
And after voting, if you can't negotiate with them, there's some.
Yeah, but this one, the one you're talking about now, or fixing to talk about, is within our estimate, and we think, you know, it's a, all the bids were solid, we saw no issues with them from a mass standpoint or anything else. It was just the amount on the one that just voted to award was over the budget that I have.
Okay.
But that was the lowest one.
But that, and that was the lowest one, yet you decide what you're going to do about pinnacles. You did not take that pinnacle last board meeting.
It's been to the.
Pinnacle was the one that, you get no longer, not you were going to do that.
Were they, were they the collection?
Yes, they were on the collection.
Oh, they were on the collection?
They were on the collection.
So maybe we make, so we're two questions. So at this point, now that we voted on that, we can't negotiate with Commercial Industrial Port?
Yes.
Okay, good, good.
So, under contract A, you need to make a motion to remove pinnacle from the bid process?
Yeah, allow it to be revoked, because it was an error.
That's what the town wants to do.
Okay.
Yes, okay.
I make a motion, under contract A, that we, um, agreed to remove pinnacle, with side solutions from the bid process. A second.
I'll give the second to you, all of you say aye?
Aye.
All opposed in aye? Excellent, thank you, Mr. Bailey. And then for the second, for the second one for the actual plan, this SGS Contracting Services.
I make a motion to proceed with SGS Contract, um, Services, in the amount of like four trillion, seven, seven hundred thousand?
Just there a second? All of you say aye?
Aye.
All opposed in aye?
Neat.
Okay, something like that? There we go.
Can I ask a general question? I'm just curious, what's, what's one of the people for what, the country, one stop run of town?
No, you, you can, I'm. Which is, oh, it's about thirty? I'm going to get out of here, so I will, I will allow, okay, I said you can go when I, if you go, you can go.
Now, my name is Monty, my concern is, you have a contractor, but you don't have a general manager, you don't have a project manager. Are you going to have a project manager that's going to oversee the contractor, and the timelines, and the money, to keep everybody in line? I've been in businesses for all my life, and I know how this stuff works.
I'll allow Mr. Bailey to answer.
There are a lot of things said about all of this tonight in the past, but to kind of put all this to rest, our contract with the panel is to do engineering, to do the design, we will be overseeing, we oversaw the bid process, we'll be overseeing construction. We're not going to have somebody out there on the job every day, we'll have periodic inspections, that was not in our contract, do full-time inspection. But we'll be reviewing pay requests, the way that process works is we, when the contractor submits his pay request, we'll review the work, we'll review the pay request, we're not sure everything's in conformance with the grant documents, with the project documents, we send that to the town, and recommend payment of the invoice. And we track that all the way through against the grant requirements. The first grant is for a part of the town, the, the future grant that was talked about tonight will be, once it's initiated, we'll go through a similar process with it. However, that grant has not been contractually approved by the town yet, so, until they do through the process of, of getting all the approvals done, and the body on the documents, that grant is not official yet, until that is done.
With that criteria.
Wait, 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 all right, hold on, wait, wait. I am leaving. You are now the new presiding officer, thank you, bye. I recommend you over proceed. I leave with the government there, new presiding officer. I'll see you, officer, any time, et cetera.
Yes.
The only question I have, that's good, okay, I understand that you all did the drawings, did the engineering, and all that, and you're looking at this seriously. You have, you have a timeline laid out, so that when you put out these contracts, you can monitor this progress, the bidding and all this other stuff, so that you know where it is. And so that the council knows, we're here, in this whole big year of work, we're right here. That, that's, I mean, if you don't have that, how are you going to manage that?
We'll turn this off. At the end here, we don't get any points, we have a contract to have to do with job, but we give them the performance requirements, all these got to get to. We also give them a timeline, you've got twelve months, you've got fifteen months, or whatever that case may be. In this particular case, they've got until next calendar year, in the next calendar year, to get it done, so we got roughly about fifteen months or so.
And is this laid out like a timeline, so that your council can understand exactly where you are, and you're giving time?
It's all contract documents, the town will pretty be advertised.
I got a question for you, if they're not making the timelines, are they going to be fine?
Uh, I'd have to go back and check the documents, but typically, that is one of the requirements. Now, in this particular case with DNP, what you don't get done before the time expires, you basically lose those funds. So, DNP is aware of that, and everybody trying to move this thing forward is quickly stop, and make sure it happens.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have a direct question of this, for Mr. Bailey, so that we can move forward? And then I'm going to cut it off here.
I got, I just got a quick question. Do you have maps of where the actual Phase Four, and Phase Two, and Phase Three are?
We had one for the presentation, and I don't want to have to do all that, I did, I did have a couple of copies with me, but I don't have a, I'd like to get you a different one.
We do at town hall, and I can make sure that we make some copies available, so that you can stop in and get a copy for yourself. What I want to really ask, my first time being the chair, vice chair, so, you know, you'll be about there. I don't want to bang the gap, but I do want to move forward. In all fairness, I wanted you to ask your question concerning moving to the one light town.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I spent four years driving around all the places in North Florida, because I wanted to leave the Keys, because it was getting, I mean, you couldn't live there anymore.
Right.
And this is where I chose, for a while, because I liked the place, I liked the way it was, and I get here, it's like a marriage. And I get here, it's like the marriage. You get married and immediately your spouse starts looking at you something different. What's wrong with those, you know, a, a small
Excuse me. Now, I will beg it. Let's just, if you need to leave, because I know a lot of people came here specifically for the sewage conversation, go ahead and leave, and that's all right. If you want to stay, you're more than welcome to stay, but please respect everyone who's speaking or just sitting quiet in the audience. I'm going to, thank you. I'm going to address the one light town. This is my personal opinion and council people, Greg Bailey, please feel free to join in. I think the sewage is not really your choice at this point. It's pay me now or pay me later. You can pay an exorbitant amount for a new septic tank, and then those rules will change, and you'll have to buy a new one for upgrades and license, as Bill um, Coon said down there on the end. It's all about, and we're nationwide, not just worldwide, but conserving our waters and trying to be in line with the environment.
Sewage is about population density. When you have population crammed into a smaller, obviously you need sewage
Okay, now, now I'm going to cut you off, but, did you have a question, ma'am?
Um, I did, I just wanted to say, because it seems like we're going to be moving forward, just like, I mean, that's what the bill was for.
We're moving forward with the sewage.
So, so now that we're going to start moving forward with that, and we're going to start with phase one, how does that look to the homeowner? Where does, does that affect us? Are they going to come on our land and start digging up and, like, what's
Initially, it will not affect you at all. Um, I'll let Mr. Bailey answer that, but I think you're, you'll flush your toilet as normal and run your water as normal.
The way, the way the construction process will work, the, the lines that are in the street right away, they're to be constructed first along with the plant. The plan and lines have to go together. We can't hook you up until a plan is completed. So we can't be waiting on the plan to get completed to be working on the line, so they're working on all that. As the plan gets constructed, the process will be, then they'll start, will be going to each property owner as we get to them and saying, all right, this is what we're doing. This is where we show, uh, we've already inspected all the properties and we're ninety-nine percent sure where all the separate tanks are, so we can actually tie in at that point. They'll crush the tank in, they'll fill it, they'll regrade everything, they'll make the connection to your sewer line that comes out of your house or your structure, and then tie it into the main line. So those will be some of the last activities to go, so you probably won't hear from us as far as that goes, probably for about ten months or so.
So they'll disconnect us from our existing?
They will, they will handle all, the contractor will handle all of that, but we will let them know as we get there, one by one. If, if you see us at the neighbor's house, that don't mean we'll do it yours tomorrow, they're going to say, so we will get everybody.
Is it proposed to be a pressure maintenance system, what type of pressure, a gravity system?
We do have, we have about four units out on the west side of town that we can't get to, that we'll end up putting in some small, uh, onsite grinder station, but everything else is made to be great.
Madam Chair, if I may, Kevin will buy them on, on Blue Jay Court. I think that is a very important aspect of this project that needs to be known to citizens, is that it is a gravity system, not a, a grinder pump and pressurized maintenance system, um, as we have in High Springs. I formerly lived there, they came into the same project with a grant, where they came in and demolished the septic tanks. They put grinder pumps at every single residence. Therefore, you not only paid for your water and twice as much for your sewer, but you also had to pay the power bill for your individual grinder pump. And when your individual grinder pump failed, you had to pay to replace your grinder pump. So that sounded like a really good deal when they first sold it to us in High Springs, but ten years down the road, when the grinder pump started going up and all of a sudden, I had to replace the grinder pump at my cost, that was thousands of dollars for that system, where a gravity system, you're not going to have that problem attributed to the, the homeowner. I mean, you're, I'm sure to have lift stations here and there.
Yes, there are. I think you see the drawing look like. Uh, there are little green squares, there's about four of them, those are where we'll have carry a lift station, that will, will carry all the, the neighborhood. There, you, you can see lift station one, two, three, four, uh, and all through there, but those are where the lift stations will be. So the neighborhood that's closest to that will bring that lift station, and the lift station will pump all the, uh, sewage into the plant here on the south side of town.
Where is the school on there, just so we can see what we're looking at?
The, the school is that orange block up to the north. See if I can walk up here and drive. There you go.
And, and beyond.
But the road going down the center of town there, State Route forty-seven, the, the road that kind of has a little bush in it, there's a straight, uh, diagonal there, uh, the, the little curve in it's twenty-seven. The, uh, the straight swath through there is the old railroad bed. Uh, Wilson Springs Road, you see it kind of going, trailing off, you know, to the bottom left there. Uh, County Road eighteen going out to the, to the right there.
Is that the extended sewer system, those colored areas?
That's for the first two phases. As was, as was stated earlier, this was, uh, originally planned as many, many phases, but these were the first two.
What's the extended?
Uh, the white area you see down here in the, uh, in the, the lower right is the rest of the town of Fort White. A lot of that area is not developed, but, uh, we do have developed areas north of Wilson Springs back at the twenty-seven. So that will catch up the rest of the town there in a future phase. Uh, and then, as the mayor, uh, mentioned, uh, and Councilman Harold mentioned, the, uh, the original plan was to go further to the west and pick up, uh, the resident, the density residents around the Free Rivers Estates and United States, uh, Spring State Park. Uh, but those have not been funded at all, so that will require future funding for that.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, which is phase one and phase, one is
The yellow is phase one, the orange is phase two. So the, the yellow, we're looking at trying to get that done, I said within the next year, sixteen months. The orange probably going to be, uh, about thirty months out.
Are you working both sides of eighteen off of phase one, or are you going to tell them we isolated?
Um, right now, we're just working the south side of eighteen for phase one.
Good though. And so when you do a, a big section like that, do you go all the way out to the town boundary? Are we getting a hundred percent?
Yes, sir.
Parcel?
That would, that's, that's what the plan is, to get as far as we can, unless there's some physical obstruction we're not aware of, but right now, we're not seeing any stoppage.
What about a private road?
A private road, what do you mean?
It's a private road, it's not made hay by.
The town will have to get utility, it's going to run the utility lines, it's a private road.
Okay, let's close that. Turn on the lights on me, please, Kelly. Okay, I'm going to be right here, leave that subject and move on to Cox Communication. Mr. Bailey, wait, I'm sorry.
We have some subs. A and D. Um, so with the Gopher store is concerned on that side, does the town have to get the permit to relocate to?
We got the survey done already, y'all. I don't control whether they move, whether they do base, so we might have to change the city, that survey is done. Uh, our environmentalists are ready to go back on site and, and see what's required. Uh, we held the office, they'll make sure we're moving forward with, with the legislature getting started tomorrow. Um, the spray field is not an issue, they can cohabitate there with spray field, and we already talked about that, didn't see about all that. Only issue we have, we have all footprint that we have on our plan itself. We'll be surveying that, see what options there is. The related processes go through, it's not very common, can't cost a little bit of money, lots of people have to, uh, relocate, uh, yeah, relocate, it's, it's
Okay, thank you. And we'll try it again, Cox Communication.
Uh, good afternoon, my name is Adam Goss, I'm a manager of construction for the market expansion team for, uh, Cox Communications. Uh, we've received federal funding to service, uh, rural underserved areas, so, uh, uh, only three addresses have been brought to our attention to service in Fort White. Very uncustomary that, that we submit a permit and are told that we got to show up at a town hall meeting. Usually, public works takes it and processes it, so, uh, that's what I'm here for, uh, is to get a, a permit approved. Most of the build that we're doing is going to be aerials. There is going to be four crossings in the city, and, and I'm happy to share that off. After the meeting, I don't have anything to present or anything. Um, I've sent all this to Mayor Thomas, by the way, so he's going to wear it for, I think we, uh, submitted at the end of July. So, we are going to be building, uh, Columbia County. Uh, we're actually putting a building out on County Road eighteen, uh, that serves as a hub. Uh, so, uh, we're building fiber and, uh, we're coming through on, in the DOT, the FDOT right of way on twenty-seven and, uh, forty-seven. So we're coming through the city, but we're not stopping many places, we're just servicing three addresses. Uh, I do have those addresses written down, that's, uh, eight zero nine three Highway twenty-seven, that's a residential. Three oh five Southwest Dorp Street, a business, and twenty-two fifty-three Cook Street. Uh, also a business. So.
Um, are you able to service anyone, or everyone in the town of Fort White, or what is
Yeah, so, we, within our, uh, plant, within four hundred feet of our plant, we'll service anybody who could buy, so we accounted for a lot of addresses. Right? The, um, I don't have a list of those addresses here, again, this is a little out of the norm, I'm, I'm not not used to this type of, uh, hopefully use that occasionally. Um, but, yeah, we are going to service some, some homes around, and it'll be, uh, usually most, in downtown area, the aerial, uh, will be on poles, so.
And so, uh, this would be in conjunction with, uh, Windstream, who's currently a provider?
Correct.
You would just be a supplemental provider?
Yes.
Okay. Right, and so if anyone, uh, in the audience is interested in seeing if you are going to be running cable or
Yeah, servicing their address, yeah.
How can they get it?
Um, I can send Mayor Thomas, uh, a list of all the addresses that we're going to serve. That'd probably be the easiest way, and then the September meeting, you can share. And then, uh, once we get a little further down the road with this, we'll be able to, uh, publicize those addresses once my team releases them to, uh, within Cox. So, i- if you call now, they're going to go, we don't service here, right? But once we start building, they'll, they'll see it. So, that's that. Uh, you, you guys have a, a utility right of way application. We used it, we submitted it. So I'm just looking to get that approved so we can get the work and
I make a motion, I'm sorry. Go ahead, that's good. I make the motion to approve, um, the permit for Cox Communication, um, with the fiber project. I think yes.
My job's done.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I need y'all to be quiet for me. Okay, my one light man. Town planner approval, do you want to table that for the next meeting?
I'm moving the tables for the next meeting.
Tabled. Use of the community center at no cost for a cancer awareness event, is there anyone here from the cancer awareness?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
I'm giving you that approval before you say something. If you'd like to.
Okay, yes, um, my name is Nora Lee, I'm a senior administrator at the church here in Fort White, and
In control.
And a fundraiser to accelerate the community that's battling, um, cancer, and, and if you'd like to
Um, we'd have to check with Kelly to make sure that date is not booked, I'm prepared for her. But
I think we're going to talk, I think, yeah, I think it's fine.
Do we have a motion to approve that? I make a motion that we approve, um, use of the community center for cancer awareness in Cox, California, and no power. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Got it. You're welcome. Brown and Brown Insurance for you all, do you want to table that?
So I don't need to do anything?
Nobody behind dogs, good crowd back there.
Good evening, everybody. Um, as part of your gender cocky, you should have the three comparison. So, both of them, for last year, it was actually a two-year rate guarantee, you know, yeah. Um, that proposal has already been signed and, and is in force, so that is such an only increase the town is receiving this year is due to adding an item to the inland marine insurance and the auto insurance. Um, so it's just the difference of one thousand three hundred and sixty dollars, um, and like I said, the insurance renewal rate are locked in as of last year, you guys have already signed off on that. Um, but this is just to, unfortunately, the only, uh, increase for this year is due to those changes in exposure.
Do you know what the changes are?
Yes, sir, it is adding a backhoe in the marine schedule, that is a hundred forty-three thousand dollars in value, and then adding a dump truck to the auto schedule, which is a hundred and six thousand dollars.
Thank you.
So do we have a motion to approve that?
I don't know, I don't know.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve Brown and
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? You're good, thank you. Okay, this one, we may want to table, is someone here representing, I'm not going to say this right, Cas, Casuto? I'll give a, just a brief explanation, and
I do know Mrs. Kevin Thomas that enquired about that, she probably
I'll let all of her, written up presentation first.
Pardon me?
We don't have
Well, I was going to say a few words about the letter, we all received a letter and are active. Um, that was the corner property on twenty-seven and Blue Jay that had been cleared without, um, permission through our town hall, and they sent a letter, because we sent a, she sent a desist order, and they sent a letter responding that they, they apologized for clearing it. Okay, good. Um, their their intent was to use the property as a commercial property for either a car wash or, um, a laundry mat. And that's as far as it is at this point. They said they were on hold because they were not sure what was going to happen with the sewage. But would you like to say something to that? If so, please come up, I'll keep reaching my head around. And before you speak, I, I just want to say this personally, as well as a council member, this is what the sewage is going to bring. Commercial projects, and, um, you know, we can't really be selective on what we can approve and what we cannot approve, because then that would be prejudiced or biased.
My name's Kevin Paul, I live in, uh, Blue Jay Court. Um, not opposed to construction, I'm not opposed to the commercial, uh, property use that's there. My main concern with My main concern with the way that that property was cleared is the fact that it was clear cut, literally from border, border, all the way around, totally down to the ground. And that is backing up to a residential area. I'm lucky because I live on the opposite side of the street. However, they literally brought it down to the dirt, right up to the property line for a vacant piece of property that is a high splice shape. Essentially, nobody's gonna wanna live on that piece of property. Nobody's gonna purchase that piece of property. So whoever owns that is gonna see it depreciated value. There's no type of buffer between the commercial property and residential property that happens to be there. So my question, I guess, to the council is, what is your response to the owners of the property that was cleared without having a permit from the town? And how are we going to mitigate the interface between the commercial property and residential neighborhood that affects up to? Because that sets precedence for all of those commercial properties that go along 27 as well as many of the other, you know, neighborhoods here.
So let me just stop. I'm just reading what I'm the town attorney. The commentary part is fine. This, the commentary from the public is fine. You're entitled to your opinion. But it's not, it's not a Q and A where you're asking these people, "What are you gonna do? What's this about? What's that gonna happen?" That's not appropriate at this time. Reason being is you have a managerial form of town government, meaning that the town council hires a clerk that's your basically CEO. And she's the one that you field those questions to. So she then can, you know, with the council, and make sure that she's provided you the correct information. Because they, as a body, can't with one voice answer your question. They might give you five different, or four different opinions that they have. But their role here is to simply listen to the comments of the public, take those comments in. The clerk, if she were on vacation, would be here, obviously, she would hear them. So it's just, I'm just, I'm just putting that out there. Because I don't want you to have an, I don't want you to have the expectation that, or anybody to have the expectation that, "Let's come here, let's shoot a bunch of questions at people and see what they say."
No, no, I don't. Yeah, I don't have that expectation at all.
Okay.
I understand that it's a formal process that it's gotta go through and, but the body that makes that decision is this council.
Yes.
And, you know, I believe that it needs to be something more than just a letter of ecology that says, "Hey, sorry, we didn't know that we weren't supposed to clear the property without permission."
Yes.
And I believe that it can and probably should be put into the ordinances of the town that says that you must provide some type of buffer between a commercial, or commercial property and residential neighborhood.
Yes, I agree with everything you said. I'm one council member. As a collective group, this is the first time that we're discussing the letter and the mishap, for lack of a better description, collectively. So we'll have to table that and talk with the mayor as well. But again, this is gonna come with commercialism. So we do need to have a plan in place. And that might include plans, or it might just include clear-cut site plans of what you're gonna do to that property and then stick to that site plan.
Yeah, understood. And I, we all purchased property knowing that those lots along 27 were commercial. And honestly, you put a car wash there next to the neighborhood, a car wash is pretty much quiet. It does its own thing. And it's probably not gonna hurt anything. But that sets a precedence for the other commercials that could come into that area that may not be as neighborhood friendly.
Yes.
So I, I think that as we're writing our cop plans and as we're writing our ordinances, we need to make sure that we are addressing the fact that there is an interface there between a commercial and a residential.
I agree with you.
Right, thank you.
We all have something to say?
One more thing, I forgot. We do have three ordinances, and it's not over.
Okay.
They just went...
They're gonna have to be replaced.
They went and learned it without asking, so.
Sure, thank you.
It's not over.
Okay, the next item is the sewer easement acquisition. Do you wanna table that?
So what, so since we already passed the whole sewer thing and we're proceeding, what this is for is to give the notary that we hired the permission to give Kelly the permission to pay for, which is over the set amount of the $2,000, $2,000, whichever authority that she had. So it's, I think it's a little over $3,000. So we just need to give Kelly the permission to proceed with paying the notary.
Can you make that motion?
I made the motion that we give Kelly the authority to pay the invoice for the notary to proceed with the sewer easement acquisition process.
No, sir.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, good. The next one, Fort White High School homecoming parade request. It's there, come on up. Sorry you had to wait all this time. Did y'all win the other night, or did the rain delay?
The rain, we were winning, seven to nothing, but then the rain delayed it. So can I push that?
Sure.
People want to share out. These are just, you already have these digitally, but these are paper copies.
Thank you.
Like it's cool.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it.
Hello, council, thank you for coming tonight. My name is Kelly Matthews, Actuary Director of Fort White High School. This is Juan Bustamante, Executive Board President of Fort White High School. We are currently trying to request from the council approval to, for Fort White Town to host our annual homecoming parade. We are very excited this year. It's our 25th anniversary on the campus that we're currently sitting on. So our theme is the silver screen. We have received approval from Sheriff Kittens with the Columbia County Sheriff's Office for a commitment to provide activities for us. The date is October 10th. Our homecoming is really early this year, the week of October 6th. So that Friday, October 10th, the school is scheduled to have an early release day. Our parade is destroyed, we start at 3:00 PM, and it lasts approximately an hour. So Sheriff Kittens has committed to have the CCSO officers there from 2:30 to 4:00. Attached, you'll find in your packet, here's a registration forum for anyone that wants to have a float in the parade. We're hoping to really have, like, some alumni from Fort White and the community in general to participate. We want it to be a real special homecoming because it is our 25th anniversary. The parade route is listed in here. It's the one we use every year, we leave from Las Vegas, come up to 27, back around to 47. Let me see what else I have in here for you. I have a copy of our proof of liability insurance from our school district, as well as the letter signed from Sheriff Kittens. So I'm just really coming tonight to ask for your approval and blessing for us to have our homecoming parade.
Sounds good, you're all prepared. Kelly, do you know if that requires a form submitted to us, a special events form? Or we're just saying, go for it?
I have, I know. I'm doing it for the persons.
No, we have to close the presentation.
Isn't there some sort of the U D process?
I think it's already done. That's what it's...
Yes, so I've gotten liability insurance, liability insurance, a letter from the sheriff. And as soon as I can receive the meeting minutes from tonight saying you approve, I hand it off to F D O T.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sound like a veteran there.
Thank you.
I'm gonna promote your friend from Fort White High School homecoming parade.
I see you.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? You're good, thank you. Go Indians.
Thank you.
We remember, we all remember all those buildings out there. The temporary buildings when the high school was out on the field. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next item, number 10, tabled item for purchasing policy. Did Mr. Bullard need to do some additional work on that? Or did you just pick that?
So I gave Mr. Bullard the emergency expenditure and repairs language we discussed. If you wanna read it, Mr. Bullard, to the council, make sure that's what was passed. And I guess the amounts are really changing.
So this was your, this was, what was in your packet that are collected? Changes recently made, each of the changes recently made. And your changes were number four, set of emergency expenditures. As you said in the section, the term emergency means an unexpected term of events that causes one, an immediate danger to the public health or safety, two, an immediate danger of loss of public or private property, or create interruption in the delivery of a central government service. As soon as possible after the emergency expenditure, another council member must be notified. Such action must be affirmed by the town council at the next town council meeting. Urgent situations that do not rise to the level of an emergency, urgent situations that do not rise to the level of an emergency, but cannot wait for authorization at the next meeting. A special meeting must be called to get authorization prior to the expenditure. And then number six, which was another change, repairs will fall under the normal spending limits or the emergency regulations. So those were dealing with emergency expenditures. I think what Mr. Powell had suggested was just amending to change your depreciation value here or to increase your depreciation, depreciable assets from 500 to 1,500. Now, I, nobody from their office contacted me about this. But, so I don't know if Carrie had more...
They're still in the process of finishing that.
Like, I'm assuming that they're doing this simply because the audit, from an auditing perspective, either there's been a change in the code, the IRS code, that they, or the change in the accounting code. I don't know why they're removing the depreciable asset amount from 500 to 1,500.
Hmm.
Like, why they're asking us to increase that threshold, other than it's probably doesn't have an open threshold. Does anybody, does anybody happen to know? Do you happen to know?
I don't know.
Maybe until we know what Carrie was told from Mr. Powell's office, we could... I didn't know she wasn't gonna be here. So we could maybe table this, if that's okay with y'all?
Sounds good. Yes. Okay, 11 on here is Civic Plus website subscription renewal. Kelly, can you tell us what Civic Plus website does for us?
Um, they run our whole computer systems, all the...
Civic Plus, you can call Me and Code.
Oh, Me and Code.
Civic Plus is a company that bought Me and Code. Me and Code is basically a code library online that's available.
Yes.
Everybody, they have a variety of hosting services. They used to host the town's, the town's charter and updated ordinances, which the town paid every year for that. But you don't do enough in the course of a year, really, to...
Thank you, Tom.
To maintain, you could do it periodically and basically get the same bang for your buck. But your, they do have other web services. Apparently, they host your, they host your website, is what they're part of. Thirty-one fifty.
Thirty-one fifteen.
A year, thirty-one, $3,100.
And that's to host our website, if you have that?
You know, I, I, let me see if I can do this. Like, we can, go ahead.
No, sure. I know that last year Connie did not price this, and she admitted it last year. She just said, "I think this is, you know, golden rate." So I don't know if the council wants to look at, you know, there's several companies out there that...
I don't think our website is that great.
I agree.
I agree.
So here's also, I'm just on, I went to Me and Code dot com. It jumps you to Civic Plus. I'm gonna look in Florida. Then I, I'm gonna look for states. I'm gonna click on Florida. I'm gonna then click on Fort White and see what's on there for you. So Fort White, Florida. So there, if they host your website, they also, this is the code codification, where all of your, there's 44 documents on here. Like, this is what they do. But as far as what specifically y'all get out of it, they post your notices, your bid proposals, public notices, water quality reports, your minutes, your applications for things, your agendas.
I see this week's options. Anybody with that?
I'm good with it. I'm good with that. And I, I think we might look at maybe bundling codification or resolutions and ordinances at the same time. Because the same company can do that. Civic Plus, Me and Code, they, they do website hosting and codification of, you know, the resolutions and ordinances. You can't find that online, you have to go through their digital nodes.
And codification means when the town passes ordinances, that's basically the laws in the town. And you're right, you don't have an online presence for that, which is also an impediment to your growth. A lot of people use Me and Code when they're looking at coming to an area. They go on there to see what, instead of calling your town, they look on here to see what, like, regulations and rules are in place. Because if it looks like, hmm, there, you know, maybe there's, if they're, if they're not on there at all, it kinda says, "We're not open for business." Because then whoever's looking is just gonna stop and look somewhere else because they're already looking there, finding something to go to. If you're on there, having it updated is pretty important because it gives people enough data. People always say, like, if you look, if you look around you, Lake City's on it, Columbia County's on it, Live Oak is on it, Swan County's on it. So, you know, you start to see kind of a pattern, like, the places around you that are, they're growing and stuff, they're, they're, they're taking advantage of that.
I will cut you off.
Good, sorry.
And again, can we put it on hold and explore options? Does that require a motion, or that's just saying, "So we're gonna hold"? Agreed? What you got?
I was gonna say, a lot of the stuff that you are paying for that is with a Me and Code, is up into, a lot of the stuff that I've found, that I bring up to you guys' attention, is on there. So all you have to do is actually, if you're already paying for a website and you're paying for that service where it's hosting all your information, you just need to have somebody update your ordinance, your resolutions, and put it on there. A lot of that stuff is already on there. Like I said, there's like 44 pages, there's old packets, agendas. It just hasn't been updated enough to include all your new stuff.
So basically, you need to provide the information to...
Well, that, or either your clerk or whatever would be updating. I understand that before it was Janice Rebels, the previous clerk, and then it was Connie was updating most information. So as far as, like, your water hookups and certain resolutions that you guys sometimes don't know about, or, oh, it wasn't, they're on there. You just kinda have to go and your physical book, make it digital. So that, you know, make it a lot easier so you guys can find these things instead of go through old cabinets and try to find old resolutions. So that's just the whole work that guys, you guys need to do. But if you're already paying for that service, including with your web hosting, that's, I don't think that's a bad deal.
So Alex, I'll respond to that by saying that you're right. You basically have to dig through old meeting minutes and stuff to find stuff. It takes forever. And you go in that search bar and type in whatever subject, then it pulls it up from multiple meetings that you have to dig through. But when they codify, you, you take all those paper resolutions and paper ordinances that have been passed, and you send it to this company, and then they digitize them. And they actually have a team that goes through those resolutions and ordinances to make sure that none of them conflict. And so the ones that conflict with newer ones, they eliminate. So, and that isn't added cost, but Civic Plus and Me and Code do that in addition to website hosting. So we might be able to get, like, a package deal.
Correct. Like, I know that Lake City does that, and that county does that. So if you go to Me and Code and you put it in county, you can see all their ordinance and resolutions. And there's, like, reserves for, or they can have remove old ordinances. So all these orders that you have that have been amended, or policies that have been amended, you can even find them source there, instead of kinda go back and look at meetings and not have to post that on your website and fill up your website with so much document.
Okay, good, thank you. Great. And the, the names that you have, Alex, maybe you can email a couple of those to Carrie to investigate? You just named a couple of the players.
Okay.
Without everybody doing that.
I think Red mentioned two or three of them companies, didn't he? There's...
Civic, okay. So Me and Code basically had cornered the market on code codification. And it's sort of where everybody went. Civic Plus is another digital company that basically bought Me and Code. So if you go to Me and Code now, it hooks you to Civic Plus. Because Civic Plus is codification plus website hosting and stuff like that. I think you all were with Me and Code before and were paying. Because what Me and Code does is they wanna get you, well, now Civic Plus, they wanna get you, like, caught up, and then you're there, they're hosting, and you pay them every year. I bet you, if you go back and look, you all stopped doing that. They said, "Hey, well, you can't pay for this, and it's expensive, but we can do your website for you." And that probably was how that conversation unfolded. And that probably was how that conversation unfolded, because that's like.
I don't know that we were ever codified.
Okay.
I think it's all just in papers all these years.
Okay.
Is it all just in notebooks and stuff? Or no notes?
Yeah.
What is on your deadline?
Codification means that, uh, they take all your rules, like Mr. Harry was saying. Uh, basically, if you go on Meunicode dot com, Branford's is, so you can go on there, you can see, like, all the rules as it relates to the town of Branford. If you go to Florida, Swan County, then pick Branford, and it'll show you all, and it gives you, like, a historical, it's basically like your statutes, essentially, is what it is. Uh, your charter's like the constitution, and then your statutes are your ordinances. Um, and it, it just succinctly, John Q. Public or anybody looking can come and see the rules chart they're laying in your house.
Okay, thank you. Kelly, do you know a deadline date on this renewal?
I do not.
Is that something? Can you investigate via?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Good. So the, the next item is twelve, which is a clerk's report, and clerk's not here, we'll table that.
Are you gonna do that, Kelly, or are you prepared?
Um, nope, not prepared for that, sorry.
And what was thirteen?
I remember the depot.
Okay, with the train depot, we've talked about it several times as far as utilizing it as another, I, I put on this little handout, as an alternative community center. Just get it up in action, is what that means. Uh, for the residents and the members of the Fort White community. I'd like to make a motion that we make repairs on it from what the completed inspection by Troy Cruz. He did, it needed a fire extinguisher, it needed a few boards replaced, a couple of windows replaced, and several other things that I had on email that Kelly and Carrie provided to me. But it wasn't a huge cost. Um, I think the huge cost is letting it go there, sit there neglected, not being used. And in the past, it was used in the condition that it's in now for a church, and it was used several times for meetings for, um, Main Street, trying to get up and living. So I'd like to see us use it as a town for our residents and community. Um, with that, and I've talked about this before with Monica being with the Firdat grants, I'd like to see us move two of the picnic tables from the park down there, Johnny D Bryant Park, and replace those boards and place those tables underneath the parking parkport. And that just gives somebody a shaded area to sit. I'd like to see us institute a small fee that would cover the cost of cleaning, electricity, and insurance. This will lay us an hourly rate, just to, you know, cover, it's not gonna be a moneymaker, but it would be a sense of pride for our community. Schedule the rentals through the town of Fort White town hall staff. I put a couple of examples of how it may be used, a wedding, a birthday party, family reunion, a gathering, book club, coffee or tea event, or other social event. Profit from the Fort White community yard sales could be used to provide snacks and other activities for the depot, when it's hosted through us, like, if Joe Blow wants to rent it, we're not gonna pay for their snacks. But unless that money has been spent from the yard sale, we have nine hundred dollars from that last yard sale. Do you know if that's just sitting in a particular account?
Um, yeah, we just deposited that, that's just sitting.
Okay, good. Um, I'd like to form a committee to organize and seek sponsorship of several events hosted by the town of Fort White each year, so we can get some neighbor, neighborhood involvement. They might wanna have a floral show, or they might wanna have a bridge night, or table game nights. I'd like to see it opened as a welcome center periodically, I put once a month or more, with volunteer staff. And I included this little acrylic sign thing, y'all see that? That's in your T-page. Um, y'all know those little acrylic things you see at welcome stations where you can put in your eat at the collective, or rent your kayaks from Row One Thirty-Eight. Each vendor, each business person from our community could use that to represent their business. And just a few ideas that we could do as a town, the first thing I'd like to see is have an open house where residents and community members can just walk through and see the depot, because it's, it's really cool. It's the original depot that was here years ago when I was a little girl. We used to get up under and hunt for coke bottles, and it was moved away for years. A private owner owned it, and now it's back with us. Other ideas might include um, cookies with Santa, I know they've done that there before. Cor- the Fort White Elementary School chorus put on a little performance, they've done that before. Um, I wrote down Ginger Norris as a sponsor without consulting her, so that might, none of these might not even come to a reality. An art display from the Fort White Elementary School guest speaker, like a ranger from either Itchituckee or Olina State Park. Workshop with gardening for change that are always trying to get more people involved, that teaches how to plant a seed. Local musicians, it's a great place to pick and grin, historical speakers. And then another idea would be a walking group where they have access to the bathrooms, and a volunteer could have key to the bathroom. On the back, there's a couple of other things about the depot. Um, I've spoken with Andrew Rapper several times. He is the one who's writing the application to have the depot put onto the National Historical Register. He's in Tallahassee, so that would continue to go forward while we're using it. One of the things that he requested, and I don't know that it's in stone, but we might need to restore the depot to the original color, white, to make it match the historical register requirements. Yes, sir.
I move that we authorize the town to make the repairs recommended by the building inspector, uh, so that it can be used for town events and/or rental.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I have two other things. You know, I have one thing on here that I didn't even think to add to the agenda, but can we vote if it wasn't added at the very beginning of the meeting?
Typically not, unless it's on the, unless it's on the agenda, so it's a discussion.
It's this Jordan Hager. I'm still gonna talk about it. Okay, it's the last thing on this page.
I don't think that's anything that we have to vote, 'cause I think that's the county thing, 'cause it's going to the county's.
Well, I went over there today, the plaque, I have to take the plaque to the engravers. I'm gonna, let me start over. I'm requesting that, there's a plaque currently on the concession stand at the sports park that has several individuals' names, young people who have passed away. Um, Ms. Bing was one of them, does anyone know Ms. Bing? And that was years ago, she was killed in a car accident on forty-seven. And this past year, it's been over a year now, just like a year and a month, excuse me, Jordan Hager, who had just graduated from Fort White High School, was killed in a car accident, single car accident, just past, like, soccer goals. If you've been on forty-seven, you've seen the little spinners and stuff on the side. Y'all know what I'm talking about? Um, anyway, his family has been at Fort White forever. He was a baseball player for the team of Fort White, and you're still here. Rocky and I have talked about doing it. I went over there today and looked at the plaque, 'cause they wanted me to, um, actually, I told amongst the toters I was gonna take that to the engravers and have that done. And then we would have a ceremony that would accommodate the Hagers, us, and Rocky had agreed to be involved in that, where we just say we're, we're proud of him as being part of the Fort White community, and we, we want y'all to know this. I don't know that that requires a motion, or. But I, is that something I'll elaborate on?
Yeah, you could ask for, like, a consensus, and maybe have a conversation with the clerk and say, this topic came up, there was seems to be this, and maybe for the next meeting, she would be able to reach out to whoever with the county and find out what it is to do, 'cause it's, I mean, I think you're just saying, we all pay with this.
I was just gonna add, I have checked on that, to talk to them. Now, what I have learned is those plaques that are there now were paid for by the family. And the county allowed it to go on the property. But the plaques were bought when they're there now. There's one for a coach, I believe, or a coach.
Yeah, those are, those are different.
Yeah, is that what you're asking about, is that?
There's a plaque, it's, for lack of a better word, it's a community flag. They've already taken it down from the wall, and it has two individuals' names on that, and it has lots of space, unfortunately, to add names.
Where's, now, okay, so where is this plaque at?
The plaque I'm trying to.
I thought you were talking about the one where you walk into the park and that's open.
It, yes, but it's not there this moment. This moment, it's in the shed or in the, their office.
Oh, okay.
They've already taken it down. I went over there and talked to them.
So you didn't want his name added to that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I misunderstood what you.
And the only expense that would be is the engraving.
Right, the engraving, yes, yeah, I mean.
Which is minimal.
I mean, that's, yeah.
And unfortunately, I, the, the other person on the plaque is a, is a male, and I can't think of his name, but again, it was a similar situation, a student of Fort White.
So I, I, I recall this incident, same incident years ago when Tanisha had the monument, and there was a big thing about that with the city and the county, because her grandmother paid for this big monument, and she wanted it there, whatever, so there was some resolution that came behind that, and I can't quote to say what it was, but the city and the county agreed not to get involved. It basically became a babe group thing or whatever, so that's their plaque. The county doesn't own it, the city doesn't own it, but we will not pay for names to be engraved for, 'cause then you get in the, I, I mean, you wanna do it because it's the right thing to do, but then you get into this family wanting you to do it this way for that family, then we're paying for this, and we're paying for that, so it can be done, but it's not done through the county. The county is not responsible for hosting it, and the city isn't. So it's just sort of like the family has to do it, but we can support it, if that makes sense.
Yes.
So donation, definitely.
Right, right.
And, and I'm sure it's a minimal cost, I mean, I don't know what the engraving would be, but I'll get a cost, I'll get a cost for that, and, uh, I'll be happy. We raised enough money for the family that I'll be paid for the plaques.
And Tanisha Bing, um, unfortunately, that's been quite a long time ago that I remember, and it was in, it was right at the same time that the park was being, like, rez- ribbon cutting, and she, the grandmother wanted the park made for, and that became.
And the monument was actually there, and they had to remove it.
Yeah.
So.
But it's, it's up in the front now, I mean, it was, I guess it's still there. And, uh, I, I talked to, uh, some people at the county about it the other day, and they said, I'll let them pay for it by the family. They just let it, they done that circle sidewalk there, they just put the monument there.
Well, the monument that's in that circle sidewalk is the Parsons', and, um, of course, I'm gonna share this story, 'cause I'm a talker. I'm thinking that property was the Parsons', 'cause I remember the Parsons', and they were an old, older couple that were always on the front porch of Fort White, rocking on the rocket chair. Um, pretty much adjacent or across the street from Bill, where that little office is, you know, for the timber office that used to be there, Dees, what's her first name?
Do you see it? So, so, Captain, I've tried to get some information about that plaque you were talking about. I didn't know anything about that when I saw it once. I misunderstood what you were saying.
Okay.
Yeah, but I, 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 I'll work on that.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I, 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 remember that plaque had, do you?
It was, it was there, well, it's on the concession stand next to the coaches, one's a coach, one's an umpire. But right now, they moved it, and it's in the office back here in the temporary building, because they had removed it so I could, um, take it to be engraved.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. I went, I went and talked to them today about it.
All right. I, I misunderstood, I hope you can come up with that for us.
The other thing that I had asked to be on the agenda, and I didn't mean for this to come into my meeting, I have talked with Keith Hatcher and Keith Hudson over the last couple of weeks about the fort. Keith Hudson is one of the Columbia County School Board members, and Keith Hatcher is with the school and the county office, I can't tell you his exact title, but he used to be the principal, he was the original for that twenty-five-year, um, thing with the parade, he was the original principal at Fort White High School. But they are willing to give us the fort as a gift. And I'd like to make a motion to receive that gift and have the attorneys talk to each other concerning what is required for us to take that. Mr. Hatcher sent to me today an annual estimate on the insurance, which is twenty-four hundred dollars, because of course we'd have to have it insured. They want to have an exchange, I don't know if this would be in the same deal, that's why I'm saying the attorneys would work together. They want the road Horton that runs behind the auditorium and Jim, do you know what I'm talking about? And the little daycare across the street that's no longer in operation. They wanna close that road, and, because that's their, I don't know if they wanna close, close it completely, 'cause they do car rider drop off and pickup there, but they don't want traffic to come through there during school hours.
It's a one-way road now, right?
It's a one-way road, but the only people really that need to use that road is them. On that entire block, there's only one other residential home, and that's directly across from the cemetery. The, and they want to put a fence there, like where the cemetery begins and where the, where it meets the elementary school, so that they can have safe access to going across that road to the P B field. You know what I'm talking about?
So, they wanna close it from the beginning of the cemetery with, with?
No, no, no.
Back further towards the daycare?
Yeah. After the daycare, you know, where the road is itself, basically. Um, so that.
Second day?
Second day of cemetery.
Yeah, 'cause there's two days on that road.
I think there's three, actually, I went out there again today. But, um, it can't interrupt traffic from the cemetery, because, you know, that's already a crucial time. But if we were to get the fort, then we can begin pursuing these grants to have it restored.
Which I think that was the only factor in us receiving it, was the cost that they had given us to restore it, that we couldn't afford.
Yeah. Um, I mean, it's, it'll be a billion dollars to restore, but it can be done.
Go off that, you did it seven times.
I'm through that picture, huh? But, um.
What is your motion again?
My motion is to accept the fort as a gift and let the attorneys work out the details concerning the exchange of the road and whatnot. I don't know that it has to be a, it can be two different.
So, so the school district doesn't have to, they're under no obligation to, like, it's a main thing. They, if they have property in your municipality that they're no longer utilizing, they have the option of deeding that land to the municipality, like one government to another. Uh, they'll have to make that decision, I don't know if they have or haven't, like, formally made it yet, but if that's their intent, um, I can give them slogan, but Megan Logan, she's an attorney for the school board, I'll speak with her and find out where, where exactly they are in the process. I don't know, I don't know if they've declared a surplus or anything yet, but we can explore going down that road.
It's been offered several times, you know, the word is out, but like what, um, Ms. Merrick said, the cost of, just the insurance is a big cost, and then if, say, the wind blows tomorrow and the thing crumbles to the ground, then we've got a problem.
So I'll second your motion to authorize the attorney to negotiate.
That's the second motion now without, she's made one, now you're making one?
No, I'm seconding her motion.
Oh, you're seconding her motion?
I'll second her motion to authorize the attorney to negotiate.
She is asking to do the fort.
To accept.
And you're asking to get the attorney to check into it?
No, I'm authorizing her to, the attorney to negotiate the acceptance of the fort.
And with that, it most likely has to have a school board vote as well. Keith Hudson said that he would support it and push it through the school board. You know, I didn't call each school board member, I called Keith Hatcher and I called Keith Hudson.
And in order for you to close this road, there's also a process you have to advertise to the public and they have to give the public, I mean, so essentially, there's a process we have to go through to close, close the road legally to be able to do it, and there, there's a process they have to be able to go, they have to go through to be able to get in, um, to deed us the school, if that's the end to the school board. Let me get with Ms. Logan, the school board attorney, I'll give you all a, um, little cheat sheet on what you do, what the town has to do to close the road. It's not anything crazy, it's just you have to advertise it to the public and you have to, like, you have to vote on, formally vote on to do it, if you just can't, like, in a meeting, say, we're gonna close that road and close the road, because the road won't legally be closed. If you ever try to enforce your right that you closed that road and someone said, no, you didn't, they'll win. Because you have to go through the process.
Would the correct motion be to table it until you did the appropriate, I mean, spoke with the appropriate people and then gave us recommendations and advice on?
I'll, I'll, I'll find out what we have to do.
What is consistent?
Yeah, what the school board is gonna do.
What is free building consistent?
And what the, and what, and I'll give you, what I, I'll give you the one, two, three, or I'll give it to the clerk. One, two, three steps, here's what you do if you're gonna close the road.
And I, I told Mr. Hatcher that the attorneys would probably do the road closure as a separate, um, legal thing, um, because one shouldn't be contingent upon the other, but I told him that most likely the council would not have a problem with the closure of the road. They close it every day with sawhorses, I don't know if y'all know that, but that's been going on for years. And their main concern was safety, they own all the property now, and they don't want someone unfamiliar with the town, you know, taking that curve at the cemetery real quick and injuring somebody. But how should we end with the motion? Just.
Um, how, how about you all direct me to reach out to school board attorney and I'll find out what, what, where they are on, on the issue by school.
So you have to amend your motion to table it.
Okay, and let me just say one more thing, I'll quit too. Um, y'all know where the fort is, you see it in your head? You know how they have that, you, they've got a screen around it, but there's another little playground area by the auditorium and by the fort. Do you know that little area?
Like a basketball court?
Yes, yes.
Basketball court?
Yes, I, um, mentioned to Mr. Hatcher that we would need that little area as well, that property area as a parking space. So make sure that's in there.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, I wanna know what goes with this gift.
Couple of books that are still in the building. Oh, on that note.
I wonder if this gift is consistent?
On that note, I did wanna share this. I taught in that building for years, my dad graduated from that building. They had one building, one bathroom in that building for years. Um, they now have three bathrooms downstairs and three bathrooms upstairs. So that's a huge improvement to inherit with the, with the fort.
I was just gonna say that if you close off that road, you'd be lining up with yourself, because the town owns about ten acres there.
So, um.
You don't close it.
Stillman and.
They own from forty-seven all the way back to Stillman, all the football field, the woods, all that.
So we're not closing that?
We're not closing the fort completely.
Not Horton, that feels to a high degree, just that straight away.
Yeah, Horton.
Horton would still run from Stillman to the school, the back of the school, and then there'd be a fence that the elementary school puts up.
That's St. Agnes graveyard.
Yeah, the length of the graveyard, and then they would run a fence parallel to the back of the school that covers the gym, the auditorium, and that length of.
So it's not the entire road, that's right, it's not the entire road, because there's a home that sits there, a whole home. So I think it's just right there where the daycare starts and the school property begins.
It's just a school board meeting, uh, property.
Right.
Around the curve.
You've done access to graveyard.
And they own the daycare, I'm sure if I say that, that they own that now. My concern is the cemetery, um, traffic, but there's enough gates that they probably enter one gate and, you know, the.
They wouldn't do that with the gates.
You know, you would have to open that by other two-way traffic, that would be close that part of it.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd end up, that'd be a way traffic.
Probably close that or something.
Let's see, that's what I'm saying, what's the school gonna do? We might drop off. Are they still thinking they're gonna be able to circle that way?
No.
I think that while they're closing the road, so they don't have to, because they block it, you know, they block it.
Apparently blocking off, but when, when, if we gave that away, we would have to open that road back up to two ways.
Two ways, exactly.
And they, or, I mean, if they thought about.
People coming in out of the graveyard would have to go out the same way you go in.
So.
That's gonna fall on him.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, that's what I want to see.
So here's my motion, and y'all, correct me as I go. We want to, I wanna make a motion for our attorney to negotiate with the school board and attorney to see about receiving the fort as a gift and handle the closure of the road separately.
Plus the old basketball court, right?
Plus the property of the basketball court for a parking area for us.
I'll say.
All those in favor?
So, wait a minute, how do you clarify case? We are voting to do this, or we are voting for him to say exactly what it takes to do this?
He's gonna get the details, and it's two separate things still. The road closure would be one, um, business transaction if it occurs, and the fort would be another business transaction if it occurs.
I got you.
Anybody at any time can say no before the finale. All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Thank you. And I think there was still one more item, agree?
Yeah, mine, uh, no, actually.
No, I think I got it.
Yeah, there's two more.
It's, it's, it's mandatory hookup. Some people think that because we build this, everybody got hooked to it right then. They don't, I don't think, I was being told that once their secretary gets that, then they have to, unless we make it mandatory for the city.
So I think you have to make in order for this to work and for you to get these grant dollars, I, I believe that you have to make this mandatory.
But we have to make orders, make it mandatory, right?
And, and it won't be until they, they, once the system is constructed, if they wanna hook into it for free, they could stall, a peep like the general public, somebody could say, well, I'm gonna hook it up now, and they could buy themselves time to hook up for a year, what is it, a year? They could buy themselves a year, but at the end of that year, they're gonna have to pay whatever you say the hookup charge is, and they're gonna, then, you know, so it kind of would defeat the purpose. Like, I'm gonna pay later for something I can get free now. You know, if my bill's only gonna be fifty bucks, that's six hundred bucks for twelve months, I'm not gonna risk the several thousand dollar hookup charge that I'm getting in twelve months. I'll just start paying fifty dollars as a lump sum. Um, I do not, that's how, that's how I would handle this.
There's been so many changes lately with E P and back and forth, but what I've read, I think, is if, once sewage is available and you don't, the citizen says, okay, we're not gonna hook up, then there has to be some type of environmental protection plan that we have in place to say, okay, your sewage has to be updated, because we're offering you a more environmental friendly safe way to have sewage. So that's not gonna say you're gonna continue to stay hooked up to your old sewage. They will have to update their sewage to meet environmental codes or you don't hook up. So it's not once their septic that they have goes bad. I mean, of, of course, they could buy themselves some time, I'm not saying no, but I still think they have to use certain environmental protections if they don't agree to hook up to the sewage, that's my understanding.
I, I can tell you what part of the success is.
Huh?
I can, I can tell you what the secretary comes to, who did say, say part of. What it says, your sewer is available, you cannot, get a permit for repair or maintenance system. You have to hook that sewer. So if they don't hook up to the sewer, and if they need a drainage, or they're taking, taking this work, and they have to apply a permit, they won't be issued a repair permit for that septic thing, they will have to hook up the sewer in that town. That's what, now I don't know what other code jurors out there, that's the same.
But either way, I think to be safe, that we adopt the ordinance, uh, I mean, the state, and then that way we'll cover.
And I think Mr. Bailey may have, like, the ordinance to show us, but I'm not sure. We need to explore that, but I'll look, I'll look into that for you.
Do we need to make a motion for, moving forward, we all look to go ahead and draft an order?
Yes.
Um, move that we, uh, authorize attorney Brett Bullard to draft the ordinance for mandatory hookup to the sewage system, once it's available. And I will say that I forwarded Mr. Bullard a Florida statute that, um, you know, I asked for clarification on it, and he's looking into it for me, but in addition to what Rocky said, um, there's an or, a Florida statute that says that once sewage system is available in a community, and the municipality notifies the residents and businesses of the availability that they have one year. So they can delay it one year, but they have only one year, um, to delay it. Now, given the, you know, incentives to hook up when it's installed and not paid, you know, that's a huge cost savings, so I don't know many people that would delay it a year to then, and pay for the connection fee.
It'd have to be a big monthly fee to save that money.
I'll say, I'll say your motion.
All those in favor say aye? Opposed?
And then this last item was the, uh, investigation, um, so we had a complaint from a town employee of a hostile work environment situation. So I'm talking to Mr. Bullard about it, and I move that we authorize Mr. Bullard to hire a third-party independent investigator to investigate allegations of hostile work environment.
So why that's necessary is that if you have, if you have a bigger organization and you had a HR department and you had, or had some internal affairs, you had some entity that was charged with investigating a hostile work environment, you could potentially do it in-house, if you don't. So therefore, I can't do it for you, because essentially that's me investigating my client or the town investigating itself. So what you have to do is you have to reach out to, and they're lawyers and they work for different, I mean, there's firms, you know, like Westers Jackson, Tallahassee, Orlando, um, you have to get with them, they do an independent third-party investigation, meaning they assign a lawyer with experience in government and labor and law. They take the information that they have, they interview the parties involved, they make, they either come back and say, this rises to the level of hostile work environment, this is what the company or public entity should do to make some changes in whatever this area is. They say if it does it, uh, they may say it doesn't, but we would recommend these things in the, you know, to, for modifications. It's the, it's what you're supposed to do, because if you don't do it, here's what happens. The employee sues you and you go to court, and their lawyers are making a big scene about how this person complained of a hostile work environment, and you, and then they make a big point that you took no action, and if you take no action, it makes you look guilty because it makes it like you swept it under the rug, even if you didn't. But that's just what the, it'd be used against you, if we get them past summary judgment, get them in front of a jury to tell their case.
So on that note, I second the motion.
What is the cost of it? What is the normal cost of something like that?
Your normal cost, um, I priced this because I knew, I, well, I called Alan Norton Blue in Tallahassee, I've used him. They said ten grand.
Oh.
I called, I called the, Shannon Kelly was a lawyer with Alan Norton Blue, she's with Brett Robinson in Orlando. She said seventy-five hundred. I called Susan Utterly, who is a lawyer with the firm Mark Strain Jacksonville, they represent Florida League Cities. She said, yes, we do that, we can do it, you're probably looking at like sixty-five hundred.
So, I think, this is just my opinion. So are we gonna get into the practice of hiring attorney every time somebody voices their opinion? Or, you know, whatever, I don't think, and Kelly is not here to defend herself, I don't think Kelly has a lawyer to, that we're gonna be going up against, that she's saying it's a hostile work environment. So for us to just throw, let's say sixty-five hundred dollars at an investigation that's not even going in, where we don't have a letter from a lawyer or anything, I mean, right now it's just, you know, her voicing her feelings of how she feel. So, and this is not the first allegation of hostile work environment, so I wanna go back to the question.
I've just, for your own legal protection, I'm gonna stop right there, not you personally, the town, as I hold, before we go into and put on the record anything that may or may not have happened in previous times, um. That's just my, that's just my, that's just, uh, you can do, y'all can do what you want, I'm just giving you the, I'm just telling you like, how it's supposed to go, but it doesn't, it can go the way you want it to, it's your decision.
Because tomorrow I can make the same allegation, and now we wanna hire another, you know, whatever. I think unless that we are defending ourselves since, in a legal matter, to investigate every allegation, to pay to have every allegation investigated is sort of, could possibly be redundant and a waste of funds.
I think right now we're talking about one investigation.
That could, that could result in many. So, I mean, if we're gonna, and if we're gonna pay for one, if it comes up again, you have to continue to pay. So if tomorrow, if I say that I feel like it's hostile or whatever, then you gotta pay again to, for it to be investigated. So I think we just tread lightly on what we decide to throw money at to investigate, but I mean, hey.
How do you, uh, how do you propose to resolve this hostile situation? I mean.
I don't think she necessarily said, she said it was becoming.
Uh, Mr. Bullard, you gotta dig up that.
Hostile.
Um, that was, uh, I, I, and here's the thing I also would caution you all against, and you shouldn't do, is talk about employment and employee relations in a public meeting. That should also be something that's housed in-house, because you could potentially trample on the privacy rights of your employees. Um, so just as a general rule, that's what's supposed to happen. And so if, if you don't, I mean, I mean, you can do what you want, but I'm just saying like, when people might, we, typically, we don't name the people, we don't say what the, what the, uh, what the, we don't say any of the content, because that, that's may or may not be true. And so therefore, putting it out in the public can have the effect of, um, exposing us to liability, because we don't necessarily know if what the person, if what a employee is alleging is, is accurate or inaccurate. Um, hence the reason we would have a, to do, uh, get a third party to come in here, because sometimes you don't see the forest for the trees, because you're in the, you're in it, you're saying, oh, this is what I think it is, or this is what I think should happen, but you're in it. When you get someone who comes in from an outside perspective and say, I understand this is where y'all are, um, here are the changes you should make, or here's what should happen, um, if the, but if y'all don't wanna do it, I can only, I can just have a legal job, I have a legal obligation to tell you, like, this is what, um, this is what, you don't have to do it, but it's, it's a safer bet to do it that way, um.
I don't wanna pay any money, but I think it's better for a third party to do it, and maybe we all learn from what the third party has to say. So that's the second, all those in favor say aye?
I know I work for the county, and I know they got HR, I understand that, but if you, if you do anything like that, you're gonna get investigated. Anything's gonna get investigated, working for a county, any, anything. I mean, that's just like, that business is.
Schools like that, but is that an aye?
Aye.
Aye. May? May. So go forward on that.
The only thing I'd say on that is, if this has been thrown around multiple times this year, then maybe one of the recommendations will be to not throw around careless words that.
Same way. Don't accuse people of breaking laws either. It goes both ways, you accuse them of breaking laws.
Okay, let's go forward. I think we're at, um, citizen comment once again.
Mr. Newt is here.
I'm looking at you, Mr. Rivera, like, do you have a citizen comment? Is that true?
I do not. Okay, Mr. Newt's here. He's from, uh, Woodery to Curran, and he's talked to me a little bit about the utilities, and, uh, I know he wanted to speak earlier, but.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mike Newt. Um, I currently work for the firm, firm Woodery to Curran. I'm kinda new to them. Part of joining Woodery to Curran, I spent forty-plus years, I know I don't look it, uh, forty-plus years in the government. But principally in the utility sector. My, um, area of familiarity is water, wastewater, electric utilities. Um, I've spent about twenty years at Gensmore Regional Utilities, and then ten years with the city of Elatwood. Most recently with the city of Newberry, spent ten years there. And, um, and coincidentally, we just established a regional wastewater utility system, partnered up with the city of Archer. A community that's close to the size of, um, Fort Wythe. Also in, uh, capacity with Woodery to Curran, we, we have partnered up with the county, they know the population about six hundred and fifty. Um, pretty much the exact same size, and, and so we, um, have a lot of, um, clients and, uh, clients for partners that we have worked with to help them resolve their utility problems. So I've listened intently to, uh, your discussions tonight, and, um, felt like that Woodery to Curran as a firm, uh, definitely has some expertise that we could share. Um, I, I imagined, as I was sitting there, the challenge to you guys, I saw that the mayor got, um, accused of not having expertise in wastewater construction and schedule and things of that. I, I felt, I felt, um, pretty bad, because I'm thinking that, uh, you guys, for the glorious salary that you make serving the local, uh, citizens that you do, and you all, you all have day jobs, I would imagine, that you are experts at. But, uh, this is your part-time gig, uh, covering a variety of municipal services. And there's just no way you can get up to speed. And so you need capable staff, and in a small community, sometimes you can't have that staff. Uh, which case you need capable partners, like your city attorney here is giving you very sound legal advice. So, um, I, I would ask you, uh, to pat yourselves on the back for keeping these things moving forward. To remember that you're policymakers, not operational experts, and that, um, you have a very capable staff. And where you're short on staff, you have capable experts, um, such as our core professional group, that can help advise you on these things. Uh, but the things that I've heard to discuss in today, I would say, most recently, mandatory connections. And there is a very straightforward, uh, solution to mandatory connections. I'm familiar with it. Our firm is, I recently adopted an ordinance, uh, with the city of Newberry, requiring mandatory connections. And that was a first in terms of ordinances, because every loan agreement that you get from FDEP has said that for as far back as FDEP has been in the lending business. Uh, but in two thousand and twenty-five, DEP's, um, came to the conclusion that, well, people don't look at those loan agreements. The general public never looks at loan agreements. That's insufficient. So in addition to it being in the loan agreement that the city of Newberry has already executed, you will adopt an ordinance. And so to help you out, Mr. City Attorney, in terms of time savings, I would, I mean, the city of Newberry, they have adopted that exact same policy within the last six months. If you don't, uh, have direct contact with them, then I'll give you my business card, and I can retrieve that circular for you in Word format, uh, to help you along, and I put Word search, and you'll have something that suffices for DEP. Because that was the, the gist of it. We could have written it a hundred ways, but DEP was only gonna accept it one way. So, um, so it's a DEP approved ordinance. Uh, but that's an example. If you're immersed in the industry every day, um, uh, for forty years. Um, most of these things you've already discussed, I heard someone mentioning easements. Getting easements this late in your project can be a real challenge. Uh, but, uh, in this instance, because of the grant funding that, uh, that is being offered to you that allow your residents to connect without paying, uh, cap charges or impact fees. Um, the going rate for impact fees in the state of Florida right now is somewhere around twelve thousand dollars. And I did the math while I was waiting in the, in the, uh, uh, in the audience while y'all are in discussion. The true cost, uh, for wastewater right now for capacity charge for one resident is fifteen thousand dollars. I would say that if you're in a hurry to get land rights where you need them, that fifteen thousand dollar trade. Um, the, the gap charge is waived, but we need the easement executed, and we need it, uh, executed properly. Uh, but those are the tools that are at your disposal, and you do have plenty, because what you're undertaking here is a real benefit to the community and the environment. And, uh, and I know it can be controversial. I've heard that, and I certainly empathize with the residents that room. Uh, but I, I think, yeah, at the end of the day, I'll say it again. You guys are to be commended for the bold action that you've taken. What you're, what you are undertaking is gonna benefit your res- residents, uh, for years to come. For, uh, this is a game-changing decision that I've seen in other communities I've worked at. And, um, twenty, forty, fifty years from now, your residents will talk about the people that had courage to make the decisions that y'all are making. Uh, I have business cards, but, um, we're not, you're not a client of ours, and I'm not, I'm not soliciting that. I think if you build a wastewater plant, our firm would be more than thrilled to have a conversation with you about operating those facilities for you. And if that works out, we'd be thrilled to do it. If it doesn't work out, I'm still gonna be your neighbor over in the High Springs, Newberry area. And I'm always a phone call away, and after, you know, at, at this stage in my career, I'm very happy to help elected officials that answer questions and maybe point them in the right direction on the issues that come up in their day-to-day. Because, like I said, it's a complex world, municipal government. I appreciate you taking a few minutes to listen to me. I look forward to meeting you all more quickly.
Thank you.
Great. Yes. So, so you said the sewage, but, uh, don't you also have a vision that, that water, so you have a water and sewage?
We do water, we do sewer.
How's the town where it's at?
We operate water treatment plants for a number of communities in the state of Florida. Uh, actually nationwide. We operate facilities all, all the way up to Maine, uh, Midwest, California. And, uh, uh, close to a dozen in the state of Florida. Most recently, we brought on the city of Bushnell and, uh, the city of Starr. Bigger than Fort Wythe, but not significantly bigger. Actually, our largest facility in the state of Florida is a facility called Conserv Two, sort of, uh, in the city of Orlando. It's a very large wastewater treatment plant facility. We've been operating that for some twenty-five or thirty years for the city of Orlando. Uh, we just brought the city of Bradenton on, online as, as a partner. Uh, but, you know, we, we spend a lot, like I mentioned, our clients are Mechano and Archer. And, uh, and we scale and, uh, with specialization and operating treatment facilities. Uh, providing consulting services, advice to our clients, and helping out with funding and making sure that, that the, any of those grant dollars that you get, as welcome as they can be, is very complex on how do you stay in, um, in line with what the grant agreements say. And we, we've got a very strong, uh, fiscal solutions team that helps our clients make sure that they, they walk down FDEP straight there. And again, I'm, I'm happy to have conversations with you about the types of things that are coming up in here day-to-day. If you just, we're gonna might, but more particularly, come up with water wastewater utility type ones.
Thank you. I, I'm sorry the mayor wasn't here, because he did a big presentation at the last meeting.
I, I saw online.
Okay.
Very wonderful presentation.
Thank you.